Okay, look, we do need to get started because we are running at a timeframe. I've actually asked councillor Pannett if she'd like to move her amendment next because we've got a couple of, I can't see councillor Foo and I know we're getting some advice about councillor Rush's amendment, so she will be, I'm sure she's not far away. Okay, we'll get it sorted.
Okay. Councillor Pannett. Kia ora. So, the councillors, I think I've expressed my very strong concerns about the potential removal of the BIF and the Building Resilience Fund. So, one of our officers said to me yesterday, there's some research to show that the effects and the concerns around earthquakes were off about two years afterwards. It's just human nature, we have to, we've got so many other things to think about. So, 2013 and 2016 may now seem a little far away, but they did have significant impacts on our city and certainly it could have been a great deal worse. Earthquake resilience in this city and this country are an extremely serious issue. So, 50% chance of the Alpine fault rupturing causing a magnitude and eight seismic event, 30% chance of the Hikarangi subduction event causing a magnitude and earthquake and tsunami, 50% chance of the Hope Fort fault rupturing causing a magnitude 7.2, Wellington fault, 5% chance of rupture, 7.5. These, and the death toll will be very high, maybe around 1800 people and over 7,000 injuries. And of course, it would depend on the kind of earthquake we're having. But given that we have just rightly agreed to spend $220 million to keep cyclists safe, I would also like to ask you to think about keeping everyone in our city safe for a very small amount of money from earthquakes. As we keep saying, the future is listening, this has been livestreamed, we have been held to account on a number of issues, but nothing will compare to what we will go through when there is an earthquake. Formal inquiries, reviews by government, and we will need to make sure that we have done everything possible to minimise harm to our residents.
Sorry, just point of order. Sorry, where's the amendment?
Oh.
We just have, I want to know what you're talking to, because I can't be convinced if I can't see it.
Sorry, sorry, I thought it was up, sorry, apologies. So essentially, the point of the amendment is, I'm just asking people to vote against the offsets at, I think, recommendation 13, and then just asking instead for a report to come back to committee, looking how we scale up our earthquake response and looking at how we best spend the million dollars that we've got currently in the budget. In the budget, this is not a new initiative. So, look, I in no way want to be critical, but I guess I just, I do feel concerned that the process around this money has been difficult for over a decade. Every year, we've had arguments about it. It was included in the budget this year with officer support. I felt it was safe in the budget, people didn't need to make submissions, and then, so it wasn't, it wasn't taken out. And so I feel that the public haven't been given a full chance to have a say and for us to test their appetite for risk around earthquake. That we haven't had officer advice around some of these to the full extent that I would expect. The paper to grants was three pages this month and certainly had no options analysis, no risk analysis, because that wasn't its point. The Grants Committee obviously is looking at criteria around our grant funding, not the policy that underpins it. So, I like to be a team player, I will be supporting many amendments around, as I've said, cycling, safety, arts, but I would also just like to ask you that you give this also high priority, given the threat that we are under. And as you know, we have less than seven years to get 250 buildings strengthened. It is not just the building owners' problem, it is our problem too. We rely on building owners for rates, we want to have a vibrant central city, we want to have a reputation internationally as a great place to live, we want to keep our insurance costs for all our residents down. If we do not take it seriously, the insurers will take action against us. And I want to be really clear that this amendment, to remove this funding, will really take the guts out of our programme to support owners of earthquake-prone buildings. At the moment, we have a regulatory programme which, you know, helps to carry out the law, but it is this money which actually, critical seeding funding, to get people over the line so we can get buildings off our earthquake-prone building list. Now, the government put us in a very difficult position in 2016 when they basically said most radical earthquake strengthening regime in the world, in 10 years, you've basically got to earthquake-strengthen a city. And the regulatory impact statement at the time was incredibly poor, no consideration about who was going to pay. Our team have worked really, really hard, and I am very grateful to them, to make sure that our city is safe, but there is a great deal to do. And of course, I am grateful to you too, because we have invested in city infrastructure, but that will not keep us safe. There have been concerns around whether the funds are working. I'd just like to give you some information. Between October 2000, oh sorry, October 2014 and November 2020, so six years, 74 earthquake-prone buildings were removed from the list, a significant achievement. 31 of those received the BIF funding, amounting to $2.2 million. Excellent benefit cost ratio, given the enormous costs that the city will face when there is an earthquake. But we of course have a lot more to do, because there's still 113 heritage buildings which must be strengthened by 2027, and at the moment, I do not see how it is possible that that will be done. The Building Resilience Fund is very new, we've only had a few rounds, but it is giving money to people who through no fault of their own, sometimes because they have a leaky building, because of council and government negligence, to make sure that building regulation was done properly, have now got some very, very significant problems. I'm in no way suggesting that owners should be let off the hook from strengthening their buildings, but I do think, given the significant public benefits of having a safe and resilient city, that that money is justified. So, I have had this put to me, what are the public policy benefits? They are really, really, really clear. This is such good value for money. Public safety, so that we guard our residents' lives, that is our job. No one will forgive us if there are deaths because we have not taken the highest level of care to protect people. The reputation of the city is absolutely critical. We cannot loss, face a loss of reputation as a bad place to do business in or to live in because we are shaky. We have, including myself, stood before insurers from Lloyds to assure them that we take this issue incredibly seriously and we are doing everything possible within our powers to strengthen and make our city more resilient. We know that apartment owners in particular are facing enormous costs and there are owners who cannot afford insurance. It's just, it's just not possible because the level has gone up so high. And from my perspective, it is very, very important that the city sends a strong signal to future apartment owners that we will back you, because the building code will go up at some point and ordinary people will have to strengthen their buildings.
Okay. Aiona, could you?
Yeah, 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 but sorry, this is very important, because there was no advice on this and no consultation. Just my last point is that I'm very, very supportive of making provision for Māori heritage and Māori development, we need to do some work around that, so that's not here, but it absolutely must be treated with equality. So I just ask you to think about the resilience of our city. This is not wealthy people wanting a handout, these are ordinary people who just cannot face the burden of hundreds and thousands of dollars of money to keep us all safe. Kia ora.
But just to explain that, what Aiona wants to do is in direct contrast to what is already in our main paper, so if you want to support Aiona's motion, you also need to realise it's connected with not supporting for the removal of the Built Heritage Fund, which is, which is item S and T in the main motion. Yeah, so I'm just saying that they're kind of connected.
Can I just ask a meaning of motion, because other than the fact that it's got a million there, it's the only thing that is relevant to the other one. I think this is just saying you want some advice on it, which is absolutely fair.
A billion there, it might make it a little easier.
It will make it tidier.
We could just make it the budget.
Unless, unless people vote to get rid of the budget, then there will be no budget, because there is, there's nothing in there at the moment. So, I kind of do want to keep that in there with the hopeful expectation that it will go through.
Well, that's my, that is my point, that because the two, the two actions are going
to have to go together to make any sense. So you either, you either agree with Aiona or you don't, and we'll see how that works. And I'd actually suggest, have you got a second, councillor Pannett? And I would actually suggest we put this to the vote. Do we have to debate? Okay. All right. I was trying.
Fair enough.
All right.
Before we go to debate, can we start with some officer advice?
We'll get back into process, councillor Sparrow. Would you like to?
Officer advice. Officer advice opens before a second, doesn't it? All right. Yeah, so I guess it would be useful to have some officer advice about exactly what, what is involved in this, how much work it is, whether it's additional to the work that was already happening, or whether it's consistent with current work programmes. Basically, can somebody talk to me about what's involved and whether we can deliver it?
So just give me a minute, councillors, I'll read that.
Okay, councillor Day.
So, look, I'm happy to respond from a heritage, earthquake-prone building heritage point of view.
And then can we get mister Williams on?
Mike or Tom can talk. So, some councillors will be familiar that we are currently reviewing our heritage strategy, and that strategy has a number of other opportunities, if you like, that can support a suite, if you like, of opportunities that can support effectively what the BIF is doing for some of the earthquake-prone buildings, apartments that aren't heritage listed, but that work is actually quite refined, it's reasonably progressed, and I think in terms of the heritage buildings, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a stretch for the staff to get something back to council regarding heritage.
So I've just got off the phone, and I can confirm that we can come back with that advice within the time.
Is there, is there existing work happening? Like, I guess one of my questions is what's the existing policy work that's happening in mister Mondons's team around how we're going to get, because I know there is work already happening.
Yeah, yeah.
So is this in addition to that, or is this basically just?
It's aligned, it's relatively aligned with what we're doing.
Okay. I've got a question.
All right.
Sorry, I've jumped the gun there. A question from councillor Day now.
It might be more of a question of the move of the motion, is this going to put the BIF and the BRF together? Is that why it's a million dollars? Because at the moment, there's 500 for each? But, okay, and they won't be going to the Grants Committee, it'll be sitting in a different?
Just to be clear, I did have an interesting conversation with officers about a different approach to the way we would spend the money, but that has not been agreed yet, so it still needs to go to Grants.
But are you thinking it's going to be in the form of grants to the community, or are we going to be doing something else?
I haven't made up my mind yet, because I haven't thought about it enough, and I need more advice, and we need to look at what other people have done too. It's, it's too early, I don't want to jump the gun, it would be not, it would not be responsible.
Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, Aiona. Just to, just to clarify, so the 1 million allocated to support owners of earthquake-prone buildings, would you be comfortable adding in brackets BIF and BRF, or the, just to be specific, because I know that we do do other work to support owners of earthquake-prone buildings and consents team and other stuff like that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just to be more specific.
I guess I was being a little bit clear, because some, some of the, the regulatory work is not necessarily helping owners, it's fulfilling legal obligations, but not, yeah. So I want to be a little bit careful about that. If people would like me to separate it out, that's absolutely fine, it was just that there was a million dollars, that's all.
May I ask officer advice as well?
Councillor Rush.
So, the current rates, the increase in OpEx, sorry, adds another 1.47% to the rates bill, and the current offsets reduce it by 1.69%. The two areas that we're talking about collectively come to 0.22%, so actually the offsets equal the rates increase. So I'm just wondering, are these numbers still good? Because it could be that we leave these two line items in and we still have the same rates amount, but of course, I'm not quite sure whether the Paireki promise has been changed, changed things, and we haven't got the running tab, I suppose, and who knows what's going to happen.
Thank you, ms Hay. So through you, madam chair, if you accept this amendment, that would put the overs and unders out of whack, and so I would recommend that you extend the weather type provision back to 30 years and it would balance it.
Well, except that I would have assumed that, well, this, so you're saying this is a direct contradiction to two of the mayor's offsets, and therefore this knocks them out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so seven, it's a sort of 750k imbalance.
Yeah, this is a shame. Okay. No, fair enough. Okay, I get that as a process point.
So, Sarah, my question is that in process terms, you can't do that. No, you can't. Standing order 2110 says you cannot move an amendment which is a direct negation. I have absolutely no problem with agreeing to ask for the work, but if this is used as a direct negation of something which is a motion, yes, you can't do that.
Okay, well I just, well, I really wanted, I wanted to foreshadow.
If you simply take out the 1 million allocated, you'd be fine.
Yeah, I think you need to take that out.
Well, sorry, I did ask for officer advice, and I was told I needed to move an amendment, so I.
No, so the amendment to ask for work, fine, but the amendment, doing an amendment which negates substantive, you can't do that.
The only, the only thing is, because I have listened to the concerns of colleagues, I do want a little bit of review help of how that money will be spent, so I don't want to then lose that part of the amendment if it.
But you have to have money to do the review.
So you've got to have the money, so you, but you get the money by voting against that substantive, that's the way you do it.
Oh, no, no, I still want the work done, even if it loses.
Yes, and that's fine. And, and, and sorry.
Not done.
Aiona, that is my point, that you are asking for work to be done, that's absolutely fine, but to negate the substantive, substantive motion, you can't do.
The problem is the million dollars, Aiona, and so I think if you want support from your colleagues, and because it is getting complicated, you might need to take the reference to a, an amount of money out.
We actually have to take it out, it's not in order.
And then we can decide whether we support the sentiment of this, and then we can vote on either yea or nay to the main proposition in the mayor's.
So can I just, from a process point of view, Cyrus, can I then add that last bit on if the money does go through? Because I just do want to make. It's, yeah, yeah, and then that's fine, I don't want to be difficult.
No worries.
Yeah, I don't want to be difficult. Okay, cool. Cool. Yeah.
You can say utilize any money allocated to support owners of earthquake building, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Can I, can I just give a clarification? I, I think that the staff will give you advice on how best to scale up the city's earthquake response. Separate to that, you can consider how you achieve that within existing budgets, or it's open to you to consider future increased budgets in your next annual plan. So, I think you just take that, the sentence, starting with an, that part of the sentence out altogether, finish it with a full stop after earthquake response, and then when we, you consider the mayor's proposition, the funds either stay in or they don't, but either way, we'll, the staff can give advice.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yep, yep.
That's getting removed now, I think we've agreed. Okay, so can we go to, are we happy now with questions and can we go to some debate?
Can I move this motion to be put?
I think people want a debate.
Do you want to talk to it? Oh.
All right. Okay, it would be quite good to be as succinct as possible, but, and who would like to speak? Can you put your hand up, please? The seconda.
Good on you.
Councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I do want to speak, and I mainly want to speak so that I don't have to speak later on, hopefully, but I guess I just want to say from the start, councillor Pannett, that you said I'm a team player, and sort of were pleading with us to support it on that basis, and I guess I just want to say that for me, this isn't anything about being a team player, it's just that everybody comes here and you vote with your values and you do the best job you can. So this isn't any judgement on you, I don't see it as something personal to you, this is not, yeah. And I, and I heard you raise issues around the process, and that you didn't think this had been raised. On the Grants Committee, I have consistently raised that I am uncomfortable with residents subsidising a small number of building owners, when many residents don't even own their own home, or have even, can even dream of owning their own home, and here we are subsidising a small number. And I don't want, I don't accept your characterisation that this is something about earthquake safety, I don't accept that at all. It's not a test of commitment to whether you want to save lives in an earthquake. You don't, I do not accept that you can conflate a tiny grant with saving lives, and I think it's disingenuous to do so. I also want to pick up a point that you made around you want to send a signal to future apartment owners, we will back you. We should not send that signal to future apartment owners, we must not. The market and the buyer needs to take into account risks facing apartments in Wellington, and this council cannot act as an insurance, or in any kind of message around insurance for those people, and I don't think that's the right thing, it's not the job of the council. I also just want to note that, given the pressures on OpEx that we're facing, we are effectively saying, if we agree with the Built Heritage Incentive Fund and the Building Resilience Fund, we are effectively saying that the collective of ratepayers will borrow for a small number to get the work done on their, on their, on their buildings. And I really, just from a public policy perspective, I just don't understand how that can be good public policy. And I guess the finally, I would say that this, the Building Resilience Fund has, there's been a number of applications that have come through, and the amount that we grant is tiny compared with the amount of work that needs to be done. And I don't, I really don't understand how that can be justified when we're putting up parking, we're putting up user charges for pools, we're putting up all these other charges to fund a small number of people who already own their homes. And if I think about other things, other risks and events that residents have faced, like the waves at Ophiru Bay, which nearly destroyed a whole house, the landslips in Kingston, all of those things have a public interest too, but those building owners would never expect to come to this council and get support. So I just have increasingly become uncomfortable with the nature of the grants that we get, and I think it was summed up for me when Michael McCormick, who was, was the recipient of a grant, said in the paper that he never expected the council would give money in this way. And I guess I just finally wanted to say that, of course, as chair of the Grants Committee, if this does go through, we will continue to assess the grants despite my view, but there's, there will be no issue with it.
Are there any other speakers? Rush.
And I confess that I'm not as familiar as I should be with how these funds work, Ben, that's because they weren't an issue until 1:25am this morning. What I do know is councillor Pannett's been.
Point of order. That's actually not correct, it was raised in an amendment, you actually had it in front of you before that, earlier in the week. So let's, so let's stop, let's stop that.
It is, it is true that it's been talked about a little earlier than one o'clock this morning.
Well, I, my apologies, Andy. I apologise, okay, but it wasn't meant as a dig at you, but I guess, it's been said a few times, don't I? Anyway. Well, I was up before him. Hey, so I, I'm just a little bit, and maybe councillor Pannett, you might be able to help us in your reply. I mean, as I understand it, the, the pricing to actually get seismic analysis on an older building is quite crippling. These are buildings which we value and are in a city, and, and as a consequence, there is this public service that, that we are providing. I guess I'm also concerned that unless, unless we do get these analyses done, we will have, you know, highly susceptible, buildings that are highly susceptible to just minor earthquake movements, and that's got problems for the public as well, and possible leading to empty buildings, which we're already seeing as well, but if you can perhaps.
Okay, thank you, councillor Rush. Councillor Matthews.
Just very briefly, so we're talking about two funds, and I'm not sure if everybody's clear on that, so they're not necessarily older buildings. So, and some of us actually might see a difference between the two funds, and that the heritage is actually supporting buildings that can't be demolished, that are heritage protected, versus, I guess, some of the other buildings that we're looking at, where potentially we're putting money into this work and then they may end up being demolished. we're putting money into this work and then they may end up being demolished anyway. And we've also looked at some buildings which are actually not necessarily great use of city space, in that, you know, I love big tall buildings with houses lots of people, and a lot of them are not like that. So, but I mean, we can address that, you know, in changes, but I just wanted to make it clear. And I guess I just want... I'm not sure exactly how I'm going to vote, and I do think we need to take the funds separately when that comes, but I also, I guess, the characterisation that because we're not doing these grants, we don't care or take responsibility for the seismic issues, when look at all the strengthening that's happening in the public buildings through the city, which, you know, are directly our responsibility. I don't... I think that we just have to be careful about characterising that we're sort of not attuned to the issues or aware of our responsibilities in terms of seismic risk in Wellington.
So if I may just speak here, I do agree that this came as a surprise, because of course, not everyone is attending the Grants Subcommittee, so not aware of the papers. So for me, it did come as a surprise that this was under consideration, and that there had actually been some thinking about it in the Grants Subcommittee, which is quite unaware of. But look, I do think that they do some good. They are not... It's not a big amount of money, and the time I was on the Grants Subcommittee, and I was joined by colleagues Counselor Young and I think Counselor Day, and some other colleagues who are no longer with us, but... But the point was that actually I thought that they gave an incentive for people to actually get started. It gave a pathway for people to begin the process of finding out what needed to be done, and sometimes that initial hurdle is quite enormous. And I think we did have some quite compelling evidence from submitters this morning that said, actually, this is a terrible position to be in when you don't even know how you're going to begin. And this is at least a little bit of a signal that there's a pathway here and a bit of help to get going. And over the time I was Chair of the Grants Subcommittee, we actually did assist homeowners to strengthen some really special buildings, and the thing I think that... The other point that was made is these are a public good, they do add to our cityscape, they actually turn into buildings that people do love to rent and use. Witness the Farmers Building, which has now been strengthened, it has our colleagues, the Regional Council in it, it's a wonderful heritage building, and it gives our city character, and I think that that is important. You can't do it everywhere, but there are some things that are worth saving, just because that makes our city special. So that's my view. I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to speak? Counselor Conde.
Thank you. I think, you know, what's really clear from, again, one of the submitters we had today, when she was talking about that her renovation cost her $2 million, and she got a grant of $84,000, that these sums of money are so tiny in the scheme of the bills that people are facing, that it's just not enough to make a difference. And Counselor Panett, one of the questions you asked our officers was whether we were going to, as a city, be able to meet our strengthening timelines. And I think the reality is that whether we meet them or not, the BIF and the BRF are not going to affect whether we meet them or not. It's a much bigger, much more complex issue than that. I think the challenges that these owners face, whether the buildings are heritage buildings or just regular apartment buildings that are their homes, these challenges are real and serious, and council does have a role, but I'm not sure this is our role, not like this. I think we should be doing a lot of work to support these people, to figure out how they can find their way through these challenges. My mother, in fact, owned an apartment in a heritage earthquake-prone building, this is an experience that I've been through. Their building has been strengthened, and she subsequently sold. This is something that I'm familiar with, this is a very, very challenging process. That said, I don't think it is, as Counselor Fitzsimons said, our public role is not to subsidise and help those building owners. We may have a role to help them figure out their way through this, through the regulations, what the steps are, how to find the support that they need. But I just... I couldn't agree more with Counselor Fitzsimons when she said we must not be sending a message to these owners that we will back you, we can't back you, that's not our role, that's far beyond what it is that we should be doing. I think, in terms of looking at this policy work that you're asking for, the advice that I've just had from officers sort of said to me that this work is already happening. We've almost finished the reviewing of the heritage strategy, there is already work and train being done through our resilience team looking at this, we've had a briefing on it not that long ago, I think it's very important work, I think it needs to continue to happen, but I don't really see how this amendment actually adds to anything to what is already on our work programme. So maybe you can address that and write a reply. And I do want to echo Counselor Matthews' comments, that our first responsibility is to our own buildings and our own assets, and we are taking that very seriously. All of us around this table are taking that very seriously, to make sure that our assets are resilient and are safe for people in the city. It is not our responsibility to make sure that privately-owned buildings are able to be strengthened. We have a regulatory role, but not a funding role.
Counselor Conde, Counselor Calvert.
I appreciate the intent of this amendment, but I won't be supporting it, because I think, as Counselor Conde just referred to, it is a piece of work about this, about heritage anyway, and we know officers are working on resilience, and I would much prefer a more holistic, comprehensive review of our strategies and policies in this area than passing a small amendment directing on one small aspect. I know, Counselor Panett, that you are Chair of the New Planning Committee, so, and I'm assuming that this particular policy will be coming underneath that, so you will have an opportunity to ensure that it is on the work programme. And, yeah, so look, but just to say that I will still be supporting the Build Heritage Fund, I don't think this is the right forum, or we've had the right analysis, to make a call on that today.
Thank you. Counselor Calvert, Counselor Day.
Kilda, I also am, I guess, wondering how this fits into the big scheme of things with all of the pressures we have, and I think actually Counselor Matthews raised a really good point, that we're doing a lot for earthquake strengthening in the city, if you look at it in a dollar value, in a dollar value way. Of course, it would always be good to be able to help people with their work that they're doing, but then we could go into that with a lot of different things, with people's homes and the challenges that they face in the city, as was pointed out, with challenges people have had related to weather events. So I was on the Grants Committee last training, you're right, Deputy Mayor Free, and it wasn't smooth sailing. The BIF caused us many, many debates, where we were getting tangled in knots as to whether we really should be supporting this or not, was it the best use of money? And often it was really tiny amounts, but we just had quite a lot of discomfort at giving it to private owners, who really, when you looked at it, they probably could afford to do it, you know, you've bought a heritage home, you do know what you're buying into, and as people have pointed out, many people in Wellington can't afford to own a home, and we just had... We had a lot of discomfort with it. So, and I do think that the big challenge is something that the central government does need to deal with, and I would definitely be supportive of council, looking at what it can do to help building owners to work their way through the process, because it is a very complicated process, and if we can offer any advice and support through that process, then I think that's something that council should and could do. But, yeah, I think we're not making enough of a difference with this to really think that we're actually really keeping Wellingtonian safe, if that's what the goal is, actually. We need to keep our big buildings that we are responsible for safe, and that is something that we can control.
Okay, Counselor Sparrow, do you want to have your speech as a seconda?
Yeah, yeah, right. Earlier this morning, we voted to contribute more than $200 million on improved cycling in Wellington, and one of the key drivers of that was to improve safety, and one of the key drivers in Counselor Panett's amendment here is the aspect of safety. As she stated, there is excellent benefit cost ratio here, and referring to the resident we heard from this morning, who told us how much she had spent on earthquake strengthening her building, with a very small percentage assistance from council, well, the $84,000 did make a difference to her, and that was the reason she was in here, to encourage us to follow through on this. It does improve the safety of the buildings and the safety of the public, which is a primary concern, and tiny grants, I would suggest do play their part, every bit helps in saving lives, so... And the money itself doesn't provide direct benefit as such to the owners, it's part of the duty they have to perform, and they're not better off as a result of it. It is well worth supporting.
Thank you, Counselor Sparrow. Counselor Panett, would you like a write of reply?
So thank you to Mr Hodgson, Mr Williams for being helpful here. I just want to be really clear what work we are doing, because we are not doing a comprehensive look at how we can help owners of earthquake-prone buildings or scaling up our response. At the moment, you know, we're looking at a loan scheme. I would note that no one has taken up the government's loan scheme, so if we are to go ahead with that, we need to design it far more carefully and learn from the government's failures. You know, I'm sympathetic to the idea that we could loan money, but it must actually be effective and must work for owners, otherwise, you know, they should just go to a bank. So my comment to the Chief Executive before we reconvened was that, you know, I feel that we have rightly, of course, concentrated on water and climate change and housing, but we have perhaps not had quite enough focus on earthquake resilience, given the threat it poses to the city. And of course, I acknowledge, I've been behind some of this work, to make sure that we do invest in our city infrastructure, in our water, in a couple of very expensive buildings, but I do not accept that the work that we do makes our city safe. There are over 500 buildings which are earthquake-prone, that can still cause absolute chaos and enormous damage economically. So the strategy needs to be broader than this, it needs to look at all the different financial mechanisms. I've asked staff to do this for years, and this time I'm just determined to make it happen, and then we will be able to give you good advice about what might actually work to help owners. Sorry, Counselor Rush, I didn't understand your question, so I'm not going to address it, sorry. Counselor Fitzsimons, I just want to respond to your point about conflating the two. I see these two things as being very important. I do not believe we are able to do much for owners at the moment, because we act as regulator, they don't want to see us, it's scary for them, we can take them to court, that's not helping them, it's fulfilling our legislative responsibilities and maybe keeping people safe, but it's not helping them. And, which is why we need to actually beef up our capacity in the planning team, rather than the regulatory team, to work people through with complex problems with complex solutions. And I... I'm sorry, I just don't accept that over 40 people were killed in Christchurch from falling masonry. If a building kills someone, I consider that a public disbenefit. So for me, it is not about conflating, this is about saying we have lots of threats in the city from earthquakes, it's not just our public infrastructure. No, no, I'm sorry, it's absolutely the same issue. It doesn't matter who... The earthquakes don't discriminate between public and private buildings, if they collapse...
What a misrepresentation, we've already done unreinforced masonry.
No, we have... No, we have... No, no, excuse me, Counselor Conde, we've actually done some securing work, they are not strengthened, so that's not correct. Maybe I should have expressed it a little bit more clearly, but we are basically going on a big programme to encourage people to go and live in apartments, because there's good environmental benefits. We have to be really, really, really careful about the advice that we give to people. To not learn from the prior experience of owners of leaky buildings and earthquake-prone buildings, to go into the future would be very, very unwise. It has caused enormous trauma and economic hardship for people to have to undertake very, very large civic programmes. Yes, there are other risks in our city, and actually people have come for help, including from your ward, Counselor Fitzsimons. And of course, as you'll have noted in the budget, the whole issue of who will pay for climate change is one we're going to have to grapple with, and I am absolutely unapologetic about the need for public investment to help communities become more resilient. You know, we all created climate change, so we all need to do something. So I think unless we've got real cash, hard cash in the bank, it's going to be very hard for the team to pivot, as has been said. The government has walked away from this too, there is no money in the equip fund for heritage buildings, $20 million over four years, that's all gone, and so there will not be help at a national level at all.
So Counselor Panett, people are probably ready to vote if you want to wonder.
Yeah, okay, so, but hang on, I just... I'm sorry, because of the way this process is run, we haven't had a proper debate, so I've nearly finished. Can I just respond to Counselor Conde, please? Thank you. I, again, an unapology to Counselor Conde about the need to make sure that the whole city is safe. It is not about making some distinction between private and public infrastructure. We are all connected, we all need these people to pay rates and to participate in our city, and if we have an obligation to protect life, we need to make sure that all our buildings are strong. The government has caused this problem without any sympathy towards our obligations as well. So look, I'll leave it there, but I hope that you will take this... Because at the moment, we do not have a plan to get the city resilient in seven years, it's going to fail, and council... ...ability to make sure that we do as much as we can.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Panett. I think we should put this to the vote. So would you like to... Green if you agree, red if you don't? And I have had a request, we have got the Chinese Garden people waiting, but I have actually had a request that we deal with Counselor Rush's amendment next, because our legal council needs to give us advice, and she needs to go. We're voting now on Counselor Panett's amendment. Just the getting advice, just getting future. It's not tied up with any money at the minute. And that's... I think that fails. One, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, it does, it fails. Counselor Rush.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Free. So Cyrus, are you able to bring up the amendment in relation to the Kilburni bid? Colleagues, the Kilburni bid undertook an extensive reevaluation of the structuring and desired to include the businesses in Lisle Bay, went to them throughout early part of this year, late last year, actually. Council gave $25,000 to support this engagement, and they are very grateful for that support. They went through a polling exercise, that's required, and the polling met the right thresholds for the bid to be expanded. Unfortunately, the results came back a little bit late to be included in the LTP, and as a consequence, it hasn't been included in this LTP. Nevertheless, today is an opportunity to cure that process fault, that process issue, recognising that the all key stakeholders in this process have been engaged, are aware and are supportive. Nevertheless, because of the wrinkle of it not appearing, the LTP officers are not able to support, but that does not mean that we will be in any way acting illegally were we to overturn that result. So I know that the General Council will give some advice on this, but the downside of not going ahead today is that a year or so will be lost, because it will then need to be included in the 2022/23 annual plan. That will lose significant momentum, and there is danger that if the businesses change hands too much, then the whole process has to start again, including new funding and new arrangements. So I'm asking you to put aside process today, to recognise that this process outside the LTP meets the requirements that we would normally expect, and to allow the expansion of the Kilburni bid. A letter was received this afternoon, which I will table, and I think you've got a copy in front of you, which actually sets it out in more detail, much more eloquently than I have. I believe Counselor O'Neill is going to second, but we want to get officer advice.
But before we do that, we want to get advice from our counsel, legal counsel, because... Yeah. Hi, all. So the advice that we've got is that the appropriate place to include...
Hi all. So the advice that we've got is that the appropriate place to include this is in the long-term plan consultation document, and that was not done. And that's where it should be included. You then have to... So there is some risk to the organisation by agreeing to this amendment as per councillor Rush, but you do need to assess the likelihood of that risk and how severe and significant you think that is, given that engagement, I think quite significant engagement has been undertaken, and I believe in accordance with our policy. It's just that it was not included in the consultation document, which is the normal process.
The risk would be a legal challenge?
Yep. As we've noted several times around this table, everything we do has risk of legal challenge. You know, one of the key ways that any decision can be challenged is through process, and that is what we're saying here isn't being followed correctly. So that is why officer advice has been, look, wait till the annual plan next year. We cannot do it in the middle between the long-term plan or the annual plan, so it's either now or wait. But it is a question of the degree and significance of that risk that we need to assess.
All right. I have a question from councillor Day, and I think also from councillor Pennett. Councillor Day.
My question is, I guess, has there been any concern raised at this point? Because obviously, some people didn't support it. Is there any... Are we aware of anyone that is concerned?
As per Phil, no. But Phil Becker can answer that far better than I can.
Through the chair, no, there hasn't been anything that's been conveyed from the bid other than just general support.
All right. Is there a great need... Oh, sorry, councillor Pennett.
So, sorry. Why did we not include it in the public consultation? But because they...
I understand postal votes came in after the cut-off date.
So I'm just asking... I think it was, there was an intention to, but it was merely, they just missed the date, the cut-off date.
Sorry. Sorry, who missed the cut-off date? But they said they've met the timeframe, so I'm just trying to understand.
I'm going to hand over to Phil.
Through the chair, yes, the postal system is not as reliable as we'd like it to be. And so the votes that were received were delayed. We tried to extend the period, but there was a timing conflict by several days. It meant we couldn't get it into the consultation document.
Okay. And just the other question is around whether we can do a minor variation to the LTP because I really don't want to have to ask them to wait a year, unless people want to go ahead right now. I mean, that's ridiculous if they're all ready to go. So if it is decided, because we're going to have debate, you know, is that another option to do a variation? Just can't do anything? Just...
Can I just clarify through you, deputy mayor? Really, the issue here is whether you decide to simply approve this amendment today or not, and that's all you need to do. And I think the general legal counsel is suggesting that the risk does not appear to be a very high risk if you do that.
Yes, I would like to let you speak.
I should be put up detecting the body language saying, "Do it." "Let's do it." I mean, the community want...
Has it been seconded?
So can we just put this...
Doesn't cost us anything, so, yeah. Well, then we just drop it and do it again. Yep, yep. Well, we're just doing it as it becomes part of the substantive then. Terry.
Read unanimously. Yay!
Well, it just saves time having a debate about it.
So I now... I want to hand over to councillor Foon. And sorry, I should have referred to it as the Garden of Beneficence. And we have people here who have submitted to us on that before, very interested in us, I'm sure. So I'm going to hand over to councillor Foon.
Kia ora, madam chair. Ni hao. I'd just like to acknowledge and thank Aunt Ester and Tina Doman, councillor David Lee, who are here today in support of this, and for all your work over the years. And I did stand alongside Aunt Ester when you got your Absolutely Positively Wellington Award. And I realised how much, how many years you've put into this project, so I want to acknowledge that today. I also want to thank our team at WCC for really helping us along with this because it has been slightly complex in the way that we... Yeah, but we're going to come to resolve today. So the Wellington Chinese Garden Society have worked alongside Dub C C in sister cities in China on an MOU committing to the Garden of Beneficence for Wellington since 2010. We hurt all the relationships and stakeholders greatly by removing the funding at their last LTP meeting that had been put there or raised in good faith by previous mayors and councils. The Chinese community of Wellington, both of the past, the present, and those of the future, have been promised their chance to be represented in the capital city of Aotearoa, and there is nothing here to represent them yet. The Chinese have been part of building this region since 1853, including my great-grandfather, who provided food grown in his own garden for most of his life to the Hap Valley and Wellington residents. Sorry, I've lost my space and it's messy. So I'm drawing on my own tipuna, if we've just heard at Kingi Tonga today, who would have been standing in spirit alongside the multi-generational Wellington Chinese community who came to stand before us last week in support of this submission to ask us to reinstate the money that was removed for the Garden of Beneficence. So it is my privilege for me to be able to bring this amendment to reinstate in front of you all today as a symbol of commitment to this community. I'd also like to thank councillor Day for your support and just, you know, kia kaha for doing this. We are not adding anything. This money was always there. And so the feasibility... We're also asking for our officers to work with the community on the feasibility of getting a start to the garden and the ground by the end of next year, so that if we need to, we can bring money forward and put it in the annual plan. And councillor David Lee has even offered to help dig the holes and provide morning tea. So we thank you for that, David. So I'm sure many hands can make light work. As we know, there needs to be much greater work done on the stability of Frank Kitz Park. Officers are working and want to work alongside the Chinese Garden Society and the Faile Malai Trust in collaboration. And indeed, it is the only way we're going to achieve things of this size in this city. And the Garden of Beneficence means just that. It is a benefit to all of those who would come by it, to ponder, to play, to meditate, and to know that we celebrate diversity in our great little capital. And we are a diverse community in Whanganui atara. We celebrate our diversity and our council vision for our city. But if you want to prove that we celebrate diversity, we need to commit to it. So we need to rebuild our relationship with our Chinese community and our sister cities, our Chinese sister cities, and reinstate the funding that was set aside for this gift to Wellington. Other communities are watching how we work in partnership and treat this particular issue. Reinstating the money back in the budget is the security needed to honour this and show others how we intend to work with them. So I do ask you all not to work behind the technicality. This is just replacing the money that was there and to support the commitment and support our relationship with the Wellington Chinese Garden Society, but actually the Chinese generations before, present and in the future.
Are you able to also speak to your other amendments?
Not after that. Actually, yeah, I will, so I'll just take a little break.
Can I just raise something with this? I just want to check, Laurie, if you can. Twenty-eight and twenty-nine are actually both in the substantive, are really?
But differently.
Well, the number is basically the same. The Ahotini adds up to 107.5, and the funding for the venues package is using the City Recovery Fund.
And that's why I asked councillor Foon to explain it, because there's a slight difference. Yep. So thank you for hearing me out. I look forward to hearing you on the Chinese Garden. So the Statement of Service amendment, this has been described by BAS as a bolts and braces amendment that we just need to... And my ask was that I wanted to edit what was in the Statement of Service to set a clearer and bolder direction of our commitments to zero carbon and taking the city on a waste-free journey. So really, that's just making sure the council is aware of our commitment and rewording to that. And then, as we go into the wording around Ahotini, so I do want to acknowledge the amazing work by our team on the Ahotini consultation. I think we really got into the community and were able to really hear their views. And the amazing outcome is to hear that there is support for the vision and the strategy, well, actually unanimous support for the vision and the strategy. So I really want to thank... And alongside that, the team have put together an amazing package of projects as part of Ahotini, identifying the opportunities that council can support with and support action to back the strategy. And that is amazing. But my ask here is actually that we just pull back on naming the projects. It doesn't mean that they won't be part of the strategy, and it's more about pulling back and identifying, just creating the funding envelope. So taking out the naming until we finish our consultation and we've really heard the community, because we haven't really heard them yet. Because ultimately, what our community were also telling us is that they want to work in collaboration with us.
Let councillor Foon finish, please.
To design and develop these projects together. And as Hui Apukitapu conveyed to us the other day, "Let's bring the ingredients and bake the cake together." So that's what this is asking to do. It's just asking to collate the projects, put them in a funding envelope, finish out the consultation, and then we can work with the community on those. This is apart from the venues access, which we have had a resounding chorus from our creative community that they need help with accessing our venues. So through the City Recovery Fund, we should get on and do that as soon as possible. So to answer your question, Mayor Foster, yes, that would go alongside, that is, as I understand it... It's consistent with your... This one here. No, it's not 1.5.
It seemed to me that there might be a little bit of a conflict. Like, if we vote for yours, Laurie, it would replace the mayor's or supersede it somehow. So I think we need some officer advice on the implications of this one in conjunction with what's already in the mayor's proposal. We're just taking a little break while officers... Yep, yep. In the meantime, is there one more to talk to, like the Makera Beach one?
With Makera Beach, this is just putting a few in together. I believe that councillor O'Neill will speak to this. But really, this is just bringing through the officer recommendation. So once again, it's a bit of a bolts and braces to make sure that the Makera community know that we have heard them and that this will go into the annual plan in 2022 and 2023.
Okay. So we were waiting just to see how this one is consistent or otherwise with the mayor's proposal. And I need officer advice. We'll have a five-minute break. Can give us as to the implications of the Aho Tene amendment that councillor Foon has brought to us.
Through you, deputy mayor. So what we have done here is slightly changed the wording here so that the lump sum proposed by councillor Foon is exactly the same as the total of the Aho Tene projects proposed by the mayor in his recommendation. If you accept this, it means that this replaces the itemized list in the mayor's recommendation with the agreement of the mayor that that be the case. So it's exactly the same amount of funding, but instead of agreeing on the itemized separate initiatives now, it means that you can make that final decision after the Aho Tene strategy consultation is completed, but you are signalling your commitment to funding for the venue's support.
I'm presuming that given we're hearing the Aho Tene submissions between now and the LTP being finalised, we can then land, A, this is where the money's going to go in individual items. Cool, brilliant.
Yes.
That's quite a good idea, actually. All right, do we, is there any more that you would, we'll resume the meeting officially. Councillor Foon, is there anything more you'd like to say when you?
No, I would like to thank officers for their dark arts in getting their wording correct. And I will hand over, I will ask that councillor O'Neill speak to the Makara Beach in more detail, please.
So councillor O'Neill is not seconding, so councillor Matthews is seconding, but you want to?
I'm seconding, but I don't think I even need to speak.
Okay, right.
But I think probably not.
Okay. So in that case, councillor O'Neill, thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you, councillors. I would just like briefly to talk to saving Makara and that amendment in here as well, as many of you will have received over the last few weeks, and we're being lobbied by different people within Makara Beach and putting this issue back on the table. So to talk a little bit about the story and the place there, Makara is one of our most significant ecologically sensitive beaches in coastal areas. It is really untouched, but they are also some of the most at-risk communities to sea level rise and climate change. Erosion is threatening Makara Beach, including access to walking tracks, boat ramps, rare native bird and plant species, and activities like swimming, fishing, diving, kayaking, or having a little coffee and an ice cream down by the shore. We have a lot of ecologically sensitive streams that run through that place. Makara is also one of the special areas where we are hoping to release little spotted kiwi back into Wellington by the end of this year. So in 2018, facing sea level rise and climate change issues around Makara, Wellington City Council set up the Makara Beach Community Panel to decide what to do. This was a really wide-ranging public consultation with local residents, business owners, people who use the site, and other ecologists, and notably had a lot of good buy-in from others, iwi and other residents in that area. At the end of 2018, Makara or Haru Community Board found that we needed extra works to support the site, though unfortunately, in the 2020 budget, this money was left out of the 10-year plan. And so today, this amendment here, which has been drawn up as also an officer response to a funding request from long-term plan submissions, so you can feel certain that the bullet points that we've got in here have come from officers. We haven't just dreamt up numbers or thrown money at a particular situation. And then lastly, just to close on Makara area as well, this isn't a project that looks at just, say, saving a few houses on one of our coasts, because it's not just that it is about saving the local ecology, the walking tracks, and many other assets in that area. It's not just for private homeowners. Cool, I'll leave you there, and I'm sure Foon will happily be able to answer any other questions.
So we do have some time constraints around the table, so I am going to suggest that we're good to vote on this, but councillor Rush has to leave just after 5:00. So just bearing that in mind, look, it may or may not work, but, may or may not work, but.
Madam Cheek, can you just confirm what our timing arrangements are going to be?
So I have outlined them, that we're having a formal break between 5:30 and 6:30, but some people have.
Can we make it longer?
No, probably not.
7:30 would be great.
Not at this stage. Okay, I want to keep going at the minute.
Bosnian of mine, thank you.
Councillor Panet, it's your turn.
I will be very brief. I've heard that people want to get on. Firstly, can I just thank councillor Foon for her leadership on the Chinese Garden? I think, are you our first Chinese New Zealander councillor or? David Lee, my god! Second, sorry. Yeah, sorry about that, sorry about that, councillor Lee. So look, I'm going to support this project. I made a commitment to councillor Lee that I would some time ago, given the contribution that the Chinese community have made, given the history of racism. But it's important that we have a place for everyone in the city, and I also love Chinese gardens as well. I think they're amazing. I will just point out that I've had some reassurances around agendas, political agendas. Just as the Inghush were excellent at colonisation, there possibly are a few questions around why the government might have an interest in a Chinese garden in Wellington, New Zealand. And I think we just, we just need to walk that line carefully. On the narrative around waste-free, of course I'll support that. Thank you so much for putting that through. The final one, I find this fascinating. I've just had a debate where I was told that we couldn't put any public money into private buildings, or there were some concerns around that. And I'm going to vote for it, but there might be a point at which we say Makara cannot be saved. And so I'm, I'm a little bit sceptical about this. And given there are, yes, I heard your points around the local environment, but, so maybe you just need to clarify that. You said it's not just about saving houses. If it is about saving houses, I think we just need to be really clear. And also, this raises these very, very complex issues about who pays for climate change and who pays for other resilience challenges. And like I've just said, I support paying where it is appropriate, where there is, where you have some cost-share model. So anyway, so councillor O'Neill, if you could respond to that, because that would be helpful, thank you.
Okay. So, no, no, well, actually, we've had three speakers for, and I'm sorry, I'm asking if is anyone speaking against? Oh, there are. Councillor Calvert. Councillor Calvert. Councillor Young. Councillor Paul. Sorry. Councillors. Okay, at the moment, Calvert, Young, Paul, Day, Fitzsimons, Condi.
Condi was before Day, yeah.
Okay, Condi was before Day, I'm told, so. Right. Okay, but councillor Calvert.
Thank you. I'm sure my colleagues are pleased that somebody spoke against, because it gives them an opportunity to have something to say. Look, I support the garden benevolence, I support, sorry, sorry, my apologies. And also the phala malai as well. What I don't support is them going on Frank Kitz Park. When the, when the garden was first mooted for Frank Kitz Park, I think that space was used a lot differently to what it is being used now. I'm very happy to see support for these places somewhere else, and I think in the first instance, what we should be doing is re-looking at our waterfront, about where things are at. Because, again, this is just a very piecemeal now approach to a piece of, one piece of land on our waterfront, and things are a lot different now to when it was first mooted. So, and given that we don't know how much money we need to put into this at this stage, I'm very happy for the money to come out of the budget. So I will be supporting this amendment on that basis, but I certainly will support the council in finding a suitable space elsewhere. The other one, and I'm sorry, because we're only reading them on the screen, I don't think we've got them in front of us elsewhere. And I just think some of these things are just stating the obvious, a couple of things. I don't, I won't be supporting 28, and the Makara, I do support that. I'm pleased this just highlighted where we hadn't been making allowances. And, yes, so I think because of what the community, the effort the community went and contributed to in good faith, in working through options for them, that I think we owe it at least to provide at least some temporary relief while we work through our policies and strategies about what we do, how we deal with this type of land going forward into the future.
So. Okay, councillor Young.
Okay, well, I'm sort of in principle kind of neutral about the Chinese garden, but I'm totally opposed to it going on Frank Kitz Park, named after one of Wellington's worst mayors, whom I remember and none of you do. Anyway, but I do not want this on the waterfront, which belongs to all Wellingtonians. It took decades for Wellingtonians to get access to the waterfront, and it's now a significant recreational area, and Frank Kitz Park is one of our few green areas in the central city, and it is heavily used. So I am concerned that councillor Foon said other communities are watching, because that makes my blood run cold. When I think, so I think the Greek, the very significant Greek and Italian communities, the Scottish, the British, the Irish, the Germans, the Poles. So the next thing we'll have to do is start reclaiming more waterfront or more land so that we've got space for these parks. So anyway, just wanted to let you know. In fact, you know, as you all know, I don't like amendments with fiscal implications anyway, but so, I mean, that applies to other things. So I will be opposing, I will be voting against this.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Paul.
Okay, yeah, kia ora. Thank you. I just really want to thank the Chinese Garden supporters for your patience today and for being here all day. And I think, actually, we should have a fulsome debate and allow people to support this vocally, because they have put a lot of time in being here today and into their various submissions, and just being patient, and having to read about this in the media, and having to put up with a lot of things. So I think we should be able to give them their flowers while they're here. So thank you for bringing this tanga to Wellington. And I think, you know, councillor Young was just lifting, listing off the different communities that are here in Wellington. Well, I think that the Chinese community have a very distinct history that is intertwined with tanga tafenua, as we heard. And also, I think that a lot of discrimination happened through legislation and policy by this council, councils in the region, and the government. So I think, actually, this is about correcting the wrongs of history, which we have been doing this triennium, thankfully. So thank you. I will be supporting this, I will be totally supporting this throughout until it's standing and we are in the garden itself as a ward councillor. And I guess the last thing I just wanted to touch on was the Makara stuff, because, yeah, obviously, as the ex-climate change portfolio lead, it's important to do these kinds of things. But I guess what stresses me out about, out about this council is that we build up community expectations, like councillor Calvert was talking about, you know, we underwent this massive project. The skating community is another example of a community we've undergone, you know, extensive consultation with, the Island Bay Cycle Way, you know, all of these communities, we build them up with this consultation, we have really good consultative processes, and then we kind of just leave them high and dry at the last minute. And I, and I think that councillors obviously have a role in that as well by not committing that funding. So I'm glad to see that we've acknowledged that, and thank you to Mike and the team for putting that in there. And again, thank you councillor Foon for being an awesome advocate for your community, and this is an awesome legacy that you can be a part of and be proud of as well.
Thank you, councillor Paul. Councillor Condi.
Kia ora, thank you. I'm going to start with Makara, because we've just been talking about that. So I think one of the things that's really important to remember is when this, when we went out to do this consultation with Makara, one of the things we were consulting on was who pays, because that's one of the big decisions here, about how do we actually pay for this? So there was never any commitment made to this community during the consultation that council would pay for any of this work. So that's important to know. I think it's important to note in this, in the amendment, that it does specifically say that we're not committing to this funding, and next year we're just asking for some advice that would allow us to fund it in the next annual plan, which is probably the thing that's going to get me over the line in terms of supporting it. I actually think that we don't want to get ahead of our adaptation strategy. I'm worried about creating precedence for other communities. We have a number of coastal communities. You know, Ofitter Bay have recently had E-coast come and do some work for them. So I think that there's the potential for this to start being a little pebble that starts a whole lot of, a lot of work and a lot of commitments. Councillor Panet, I do actually think that property owners, private property owners need to be making a contribution where these kinds of investments are protecting their, are protecting their financial investment. And one of the things in here is that we're going to look at, the advice will incorporate an assessment of alternative funding sources. One of the things that was being looked at during the consultation was a targeted rate, looking at those homeowners whose property would be protected by this work. So we will be looking at that as part of this work. So it's with those caveats that I'm comfortable supporting this going forward. I also want to thank the Chinese community and the, for all of the time that you've spent in this room, and all of the time that you've spent organising other people to come and join us in this room, to raise our awareness about the history of the garden of beneficence and what an important project this is for your community. I think one of the things that we, that you learn even after only 18 months of sitting at this table, is that projects like this take years, if not decades. at this table, is that projects like this take years, if not decades, to get across the line. And we need, as councillors, we need to stay the course on some of these commitments that weren't made by me personally, but were made by this table. And it's important that the community can trust that we will stay the course, even if the personnel at this table changes. So I do think that that is important. I think that, you know, regardless of people's views around whether that's appropriate for this to be at Frank Kitz Park, there is a resource consent, it was granted, it was challenged in court, it held up. All of those issues have been considered and carefully weighed and been resolved. I acknowledge councillor Calvert that this will not be the right number. We are going to have to, we not all know that we're going to have to have more work coming back from offices, we know they're doing that work right now, that will come back and tell us what work we need to do to get the ground in a good, enough state for things to go on top of it. So we've got two communities who want to come and put, in one case, a garden, in another case, a Fale Malai on top of that ground. We know the ground conditions there are not good. We will get officer advice in due time about that. But I actually don't have a problem with it not being the right number. Let's be honest, most of the numbers that are out past year three in this plan are not going to be the right number, right? That's the reality of these things, we're forecasting a long way into the future. It's okay that it's not a right number, I think it is important that it is there to send a signal to this community that we're committed to this.
Thank you councillor Conde, councillor Day.
Kiora, so I too want to speak to the Garden of Beneficence, the Chinese garden, and I want to honour the significant commitment that was made well before I was ever aware that it was made. When I got into council, it was one of the things that I was really interested in, because on the campaign trail, there were people who were talking about it, and the understanding of it was actually that one of the things that made me really want to understand more, because they clearly didn't understand it, and I could feel an undertone in some of the conversations that actually drove me towards wanting to support it, for the exact reason that some people don't want it there. But I really want to acknowledge the amazing turnout from the community for the submissions. I was sad that not everybody was here around this table to hear it. I think if they had been, they would be seeing it in a slightly different way, because it was such a diverse group of people, having the race relations commissioner here, who is the patron of this, the group, so Ming Foo, and we had Dame Winnie Laban in the room, Adrian Aua, so they're the Fale Malai Trust people, we had multicultural community, and just an amazing array of Chinese residents that live in the city that we're so lucky to have here. It was a really powerful experience, and I think it's important for us to remember that we are making decisions that impact people who live here now. And also, I just want to reflect on the comments of councillor David Lee's daughter, who told us of the significance for her of her, this actual site being very close to where her ancestor had first come to Wellington. And for me, that's really important, because obviously, for family who have moved a long way from their origin, being able to connect back is really important. And for our young people to be able to connect to their tupuna who have come from far away is really important, because they can have pride in their culture. I know that some people say it could just be somewhere else. I feel like I've heard that argument with regards to other ko'apu, we have debated just this year, when we say, just not this year, let's not do it right now, it's a bit expensive. There's always an excuse, and I've said before, we know what that's code for, and we need to make sure that we don't, we don't get put off by that. Over the summer, we were down in the South Island in Maroon Dunedin, and I'm going to go and visit the Chinese garden there. And I arrived about, maybe about half an hour before it was closing, and I said who I was and that I was wanting to have a look around the Chinese garden. And it's such a beautiful place, it was really lovely, actually, it was at the end of the day, and it was so peaceful, and I thought this would be a wonderful addition to our waterfront. Obviously, Awan will look different, because it's a different space, but it was a really inspiring, peaceful place, and I felt like I had been transported somewhere else. And I thought, gosh, what a lovely thing in New Zealand that we can have a taste of other parts of the world here. And I do want to acknowledge the importance of sister city relationships, and I think that's why I take so seriously the very quick removal of it at our last LTP meeting, and the harm that that can do. Those sister city relationships, the agreements that are made are really, really treasured by our sister city. You know, they are things that we show relationship and trust through, and often there are things done on the other side that are supportive as well, and we need to make sure that we honour the things that we've promised to do. Even if it wasn't us personally, we still need to honour them. I also want to just address this concept, it keeps being brought up that it's $40 million, not 6.5 or whatever it is. We know that it may not be 6.5, but let's be honest, $40 million is not for the Chinese garden. That includes the car park, the playground, some of the ground sufficing stuff. That is not, that's not a fair representation of where that money has been, where that figure has been bought from. And I think it's really important that we don't try to pile that in. I've had a quote shared with me today, which I think is an important one to share, and it's from Joe Biden. Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value. And so actually, if we were doing the right thing, we would be trying hard to really work out what that budget is and get it in today. But we don't have that knowledge, but what we can do is put the budget that we had there, and show serious commitment, and then move on quickly, and try and really get this through. I just want to finish by saying that, I was talking to Esther a few weeks ago, and then today, about the people who have worked so hard on this, who aren't here anymore. And I know that I'm not alone in saying that I would love to see this garden here, so that Esther can see it. So I definitely support it.
So, we've actually had three speakers speak in favour, so unless there's anyone who wants to speak against it, I'm going to go to councillor Foo, not auntie Esther. I'm sure you would have loved to give them a write of reply, but.
I just have one minute.
But we actually, I am going to go to the write of reply. Thank you colleagues for your voice and for sharing, you know, where you sit on these issues. I think for the Chinese, for the Garden of Beneficence, thank you Jill, sorry councillor Day, for painting the vision of what it will bring. And I think, you know, the same as the Cycleways discussion, it's not about us now, it's about who's going to be there in the future, and what this will be a gift to them. So, and just a reminder that this is about honouring that commitment, and so, and that was also beautifully brought up, that it is important as a council that we honour the commitments of the past. So I thank you for that, and look forward to your vote. Just on Makara, thank you for the questions there, I think they were well conveyed by councillor Conde, but I think the principle of this is about cost sharing, reflecting public and private benefit, and that front is a public space. I know that, I love spending time at Makara Beach, it's a real treasure to go there, and I would like to see the ecology of that space looked after as long as we can. So yeah, totally up for that. Vote on this, does anyone want anything taken separately? Which number is that? All of 29, okay. Alrighty, so we'll do everything except 29. So Frank Kitz garden, waste wording, and Ahotene, and we'll take a division. All right, okay. So in that case, it's, sorry. We just need to be patient. So now we're only doing, what are we doing, Cyrus, we are doing 15A, 27, and we'll do those two, 15A and 27, together. No, no, and us two. Ahotene, okay. All right, so, let's vote. Then we'll do Ahotene, and then we'll do Makara. Yeah, well done. And that is carried. Now we will do the Ahotene amendment. And an added bonus is you may get your paialo, paialo, paialo. Yep, so that will be very nice. During the Ahotene amendment, which is 28. It's making it a bit more flexible when it means, I think that it gives us the opportunity to consult more genuinely. And that is carried. Did we want a division? Oh, you've done it, yeah. And the last one will be the Makara, number 29, is it?
Yep.
So we'll vote on that. And that is carried.
Good. Very briefly, Madam Chi, I make my apologies, I'm going to go. If there was a lot of stuff that I felt was controversial remaining, I would have stayed, but I think we're pretty much there, so with you or leave. Thanks very much, have a great day.
Thank you for your contribution councillor Rush. Councillor Rush. All right, just a little, a little heads up that we will be having dinner provided downstairs in Level Eight, some sort of refreshments, something for supper, I don't know what you would describe it, but, so at 5.30. So we have time now, I think. Are there any more amendments? No. So we have time to go back to the substantive? And is there anyone who'd like to speak? There is quite a bit in that substantive. I think we have debated the BIF and the BRF. So the suggestion was actually that we take the amendments that put money back into the budget first, so that then, yeah, the ones that save money.
Can we get another printout, because since it's been changed?
I don't think we need to take a break. But I'm wondering if our CFO could provide a bit of advice.
Well, we need the printed copies, so we know what we're talking about, because the data has changed, because it was wrong in the first place.
And I suggest we need a brief adjournment to figure out this.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute adjournment to figure this next process out. Look, as I was explaining, I think we just crack on with speaking to the main motion. And what will happen is over our dinner break, whatever it is, we will get some updates on the figures and also a new printout so that by the time we come to vote and make our final decisions, we will have that information. But in the interest of keeping going, I'm going to ask everybody to only speak once to the main motion and if possible, try and limit it to the three minutes at your discretion, of course, but if we're going to get out of here at any time to have an evening. Okay, so, um, who, returning now to the main motion. Who would like to speak to it? Because we, of course, we have had quite a lot of speeches, but, um... Well, it depends. It's up to your colleagues. Who would like to, um... Okay. Councillor Calvert, thank you.
That's all right. Okay, so, um, most of my colleagues won't be surprised that I'm not going to be supporting most of this LTP. We went out for consultation and since that consultation, we would have had, we've had an opportunity to actually try and build some consensus through the leadership of the mayor. It hasn't happened. I'm really disappointed that we decided to put an extra $100 million into, into the cycleway program without thinking whether that $100 million could be better spent in housing infrastructure, in water infrastructure, acknowledging that we have put the $400 million back in for social housing. We've heard from our officers about the capacity of the market to be able to deliver on infrastructure projects. We took that advice in terms of the preferred option around the water infrastructure, but we seemingly ignored that in terms of the cycleway infrastructure. So, um, I'm not sure whether, you know, we're, we're in the right space to actually set the vision for the city. I mean, this long-term plan was an opportunity to show a cohesive vision. What we've got is we've got lots of bunches of silos, I think. And basically, this is further evidenced by what I would call the spaghetti junction of amendments that have been before us today and have come through at the last minute. And we've had, in the papers that we got out on Friday evening, we had additional projects in that hadn't been consulted on as part of the long-term plan. And that actually threw up a rates increase of close to 16%. And for commercial ratepayers, that would have been 17%, 18%. It is unacceptable. We have had an opportunity where we could have looked at some of the additional spend that we had actually put in the LTP consultation, but no one has really been up for that conversation. We just want to keep adding money in. And we've been able to save some money by spreading some of the debt repayments going back, but even now, we are, we're still waiting for the final amended schedule and what it actually means for the ratepayers. You know, I, I went out to a number of engagements and some by myself. What I was really surprised by a number, quite a few people who didn't want to submit, they said, "Council, you don't listen to me." And I have to say, we, I noticed officers did a, a survey, a democratic survey, which was made sure that was, it was representative of the whole city, not just the inner city, not just from one particular group. 7% said we support an accelerated cycle program. The rest didn't. But we've chosen to ignore that. I've heard conversations around this table debating the professionalism of that survey, whether it was right or not, but we seemingly can accept an orchestrated volume of submissions and think that's representative of our city. It's not. So I don't think this LTP has been pulled together as well, and I won't be in general supporting it. And obviously, there's going to be various votes on, it'll be split up, and I'll make my decision then, but in, in general, I'm not supporting it.
Thank you, councillor Calvert. Councillor Young, did you have your hand up? Yes. Councillor Young's finished, councillor Calvert's finished.
The long-term plan was that taking the community along with the council. And one of the things that people have been saying to me is they are really concerned about our rates increases. And there has been one long request letter, like the ones we used to write as children to Father Christmas, from, from some Wellingtonians and some councillors. You know, I'm really concerned about the, our financial, what lies ahead of us financially. You know, we know inflation is about to kick in. You can tell when you go and buy your groceries, they're more expensive. Interest rates are starting to increase. And instead, what we're doing is we're borrowing and borrowing at the expense of ratepayers and tomorrow's ratepayers and people on fixed incomes. I know I go on about this, but people with mortgages, renters, they will all be affected. So there are some really good things in the long-term plan, and there's some other things which I think are basically, to use a technical term, batshit. But there's no real serious commitment to cutting our overheads as other councils have done around New Zealand. So, you know, I've always been publicly committed for, one, being consistent. Two, you know, I don't like late last-minute amendments with fiscal implications. I bore you to tears about that. And I am, you know, I have been very strong that my two commitments are lowering the rates as much as possible and focusing on infrastructure, you know, water infrastructure to, to fit for purpose. Those are my top priorities. So I will be voting against almost everything in the long-term plan, with the exception at this stage of the Tofaya, because that plugs a major hole in our arts infrastructure. So that's for me.
Thank you, councillor Young. Well, if we have three against, I can actually put it... I'm just joking. Councillor Conde. It was meant to be a joke.
I think, you know, this budget has always been a massive challenge, and we've known that for 18 months, that this is going to be a really difficult budget. We, you know, some previous councils had not invested as much in, in water infrastructure as perhaps we should have, and that's, you know, I'm not trying to cast blame, these are just things that have happened, and we have to accept them and move on and figure out how we're going to sort it out. You know, we also have a, a history in this council of debt funding some operating costs in order to kind of get the rates down artificially under a particular number. And so, and then we had COVID, which I think we were very, we were perfectly right to debt fund our OpEx to get us through that, but it's meant that we, our starting point for this rates increase was massive. And I guess my whole philosophy coming into this budget has been, I feel like, a little bit, I got a bit of a hospital pass. I feel a little bit like previous councils have kind of kicked the can down the road a bit, and, and I didn't want to do that. That was always my, my thing in this budget. I didn't want to be the one who was kicking the can down the road for the next, the next people to have to, to sort out. And while this has certainly been a bumpy road to get to this point, and I don't love everything that's in this budget, I can live with it. And I think that it does land, it doesn't kick the can down the road. I think it addresses the really significant challenges we have in infrastructure that Wellingtonians know we have and want us to fix, and they know it's going to come at a cost. I don't think I've heard any Wellingtonians who love the idea of a 13.5% rates increase, but everybody understands, for the most part, that we need infrastructure that functions, and that comes at a cost. While it might be tempting to say, "I'm, I'm not going to vote for this budget," I think we, we have a responsibility to land something for Wellington today. We have to land a budget today. The city needs us to, and I think that it's very important that we do that. Therefore, I will be voting for this, this budget. I want to thank everybody who's worked really hard on it. It has been a really challenging process that hasn't always gone the way we might have all liked, but I also know that everybody has been working really hard. And I think we need to acknowledge that, that we're all, it's, it's a difficult time for us, we're all working hard, we're all doing our best. It doesn't always come out right, but that's okay. That's life. And I actually think in the end, this is the budget that Wellington needs. It is going to deliver what Wellington needs for the future in infrastructure, in city safety, on climate. This is a budget that looks to the future and invests where our city needs us to. Kia ora.
Councillor Conde, I'll put myself next. When I stood for election, I made a very simple promise to my community. I said, "This is going to be the triathlon for fixing things." And you know what? People came up to me and they, they knew things were broken, they knew the pipes were leaking, they knew things weren't great, that there's lots of unresolved issues around the city, especially after our earthquakes. I think it's fair to say, we can think other councils might have kicked the can down the road, but in some cases, I genuinely believe the earthquake has exacerbated things for us and made, brought forward things that might have been okay for a few more years, and we might have had a little bit more room to actually fix things. But all of a sudden, a lot of issues landed on our plates, and it became really obvious lots of things need fixing, and the future may look very, very different. COVID showed us the future may look quite different. It made us realise our vulnerabilities and our need to actually support our local environment and, and build the kind of resilience and future-proofing that we're going to need. So I think there are two things we're trying to address in this budget. They're both quite important. One is about fixing things, and the other is about turning to face the future and actually thinking, "If we're steering a big ship, we need to really look at where that's going and, and put the budget into where it needs to go." What's the problem with the hand? Sorry? Oh, you want the, the thing, sorry. I just wondered if my voice was too loud or too soft. Okay. Right. So, um, look, I don't think it's necessarily the budget I would have personally written. I'd have tweaked quite a few things. But then it's not the budget any one of us individually, as, as a single person out of 15, would have written. Everything is a compromise, and it's about getting round the table and actually listening to each other and trying to work out where that sweet spot is, and with our communities too, working out where that sweet, sweet spot is. And I actually think it would be irresponsible not to be spending on our city right now. People, they can't spend it. We have to actually take the lead and decide we're going to have a spend on the things that matter. And I have had two letters complaining about the rates rise, and that's actually means to me that there's a lot more people who are accepting of this and understand why it's needed right now. I do think, however, that we needed to, to stick to the commitment we made, that it was about 13.5%. I think people had swallowed that. They didn't necessarily want to swallow something bigger. So I'm happy that this budget has kept to roughly that parameter. I thank everybody's hard work. I think everybody's added something. I thank councillor Calvert for some of the work that you did, thinking about how things could be adjusted. You know, your caution about, "Are we actually spending it on the right things?" It's made me look again. But on balance, I'm actually going to support every single thing, I think. I can't think of anything I'm not supporting at the moment. I'll wait till we get our piece of paper, but I'm going to support everything. I thank the mayor, actually, for bringing us an amended budget that actually did respond to some of the concerns around the table. I know people have added extra amendments since that point, but our starting position was a good one, and so thank you for that, Mayor Foster. Right, so I'm going to stop there and, actually, we were going to break at half past five. How critical is that time? I think, I think we have got some time constraints with some people. Okay. Okay. I'm going to allow that because then we can have our dinner, and I think we will have to come back. Does everyone need an hour's break? Can we do with half an hour? Is that all right for everybody? And that will mean that we can actually get cracking and get through this. Okay, so councillor Pana, you speak now.
I'll be really brief. Look, I just, I just like to thank the staff, of course, because they've worked incredibly hard. I bet some of them haven't had much sleep, and I just want to put that, whether I agree with what's been done or not is irrelevant, worked really hard. And I'd also just like to take the opportunity to thank the mayor, because the mayor, who I've known for many years, has moved very, in very significant ways on this budget. You hate spending money, we know that. And yet, we're going out with a really high rates increase to invest in the city. So I'd just like to thank you for doing that, because I know it can't have been easy for you to do that. Now, I, I chose not to move an amendment, but I will just restate my concern that we have still got a large number of things which are unfunded, and that is of concern to me. It won't be easy, but I'm full of confidence that we will fix it. We're just going to have to work really hard. The rates, like I said it before, it's not a burden. It is your responsibility as a citizen, it's the way you can make a contribution. It gives us huge benefits. Whether the level is right is a matter of argument, but I don't think we should be talking about them as a burden. Councillor Young, I'm just interested in your comments. You know, we spend a lot of money, which we might not necessarily should be doing, arts, social areas, you know, the, the government possibly should be doing that. But if we want an amazing city, I believe that we do have to fund all the wellbeing areas, not just some of them. I would just like to repeat my point to about, can we please not have comments around submitters organising? It's politics, it's democracy, people have a right to do so, and thank goodness they do, because otherwise, we wouldn't get the amazing changes like the Chinese garden. So that is fantastic. I'd just like to give a particular shout out to staff on the walking improvements. Walking advocates have been waiting for some time to get some improvements. So we have more monies in the budget, and we will pursue this with vigor, because it's really, really important that we keep our city very walkable. And just the last point I'd like to make, the city safety budgets, look, I hear the, the experience of many people in our city, it's not mine, but I hear that experience, and I really thank people for doing a lot of work. But councillor Paul, can I just, through the chair? As probably now, as an overly, as an aged feminist, I still believe that we have to put the right analysis in place, that it is not about lighting, it is not about providing a bit of refuge in town. Until we deal with the issues of power and control and inequality, we will not stop the violence. And so that, that is something that we still just need to keep working for, and I hope that we will continue to design for equality and inclusion as well as safety. But look, I think everyone's worked really hard, everyone's hopefully got something that is really important to them, and they can walk out of here saying they fought hard for their community and have made the city a better place.
All right. Well, with that, we're going to take a break now. I did have a question from, came through from councillor Young.
So councillors, I just wanted to clarify before you go into the break, in case there is confusion about what this current package represents in terms of rates increase. So this is around the 13.5% level that you are aiming for? Just so that you understand that as you, as you move on to the yes, as it, as it is.
Yes. Any, any additional or, we, we will keep an eye on any balancing between anything you might remove or add, but at the moment, it is 13.5%.
The, the Built Heritage Fund, if that were to be voted for, because I think that's the one thing we probably had quite a bit of discussion, that would add 0.29, was it? Oh, we'll let you, maybe you can answer after the break. All right. So I'm going to suggest we come back at, we will have half an hour, so I'm going to suggest we come back at five past six really promptly, if that's okay. And I'll try and tune the bell at five past six with eight people round the table so we can continue. And... Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
oh, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
So I have on the speaking order councillor Fitzsimons, councillor Paul, councillor Matthews, councillor Day and who have I forgotten councillor O'Neill. Is there anyone else councillor Phone? Yeah, all right, just to be there. And is there anyone else likely to be wanting to speak? Maybe councillor, who knows? But I suggest we get started, crack back into it. So councillor Fitzsimons.
Cool, just briefly because lots of things have been covered. But I just wanted to lend my support to the comments that have been made thinking officers for all the work that's gone into this. I know it's been a huge amount of work and as much as I'm someone who supports open and transparent decision making, we sort of have let Wellington see how the sausages are made. And you know, I think that, you know, there are ups and downs with that. Let's just leave that there. And I guess, I just want to reflect on what I said in the last LTP. I talked a lot about how it was an LTP that was consistent with one of my favourite union anthems, which is Bread and Roses. And again, it feels like this LTP is consistent with both bread and roses. And it feels like we're really backing basic core infrastructure in this LTP in the way that Wellington needs us to because what we can see around our city is that water infrastructure is failing. And we've had a clear message from Wellingtonians, they want us to make sure that the basics of our city are running properly. And I, so I'm really pleased that we've done that and that it's so clear. But it's not just core infrastructure and water infrastructure, it's investment in climate change. We're fully funding Te Aitakura, it's investment in cycle ways, it's investment in city safety. And I do want to talk about the investment in city safety because one of the things, one of my very first election promises was that we should end sexual violence in Wellington. And at the last LTP, we had an orchestrated campaign of people who came and told us that they wanted Wellington to be a city that's free from sexual violence in the same way that we've had for option for in the cycle way. And I guess I want to echo the comments that councillor Pannett made is to communities out there who want to achieve things in the city, organise. It's how it works. That's how you convince people. That's how politics works. You organise effectively, you make your case, and then this council will make the change that you want to see in your city. And for me, the record investment in city safety is something that is so important to Wellington. It's not good enough that people are not safe on our streets. And I think the council is really doing our part in that social contract with Wellington. And I guess I did just want to comment on some of the roses in this plan as well. And I think the Chinese garden is one. And I'm very sad about the way, and I didn't get to speak on the Chinese garden because there were so many positive speakers. But I guess I just want to say that the way this was handled has caused harm with the Chinese community that was unnecessary, particularly given the vote went through so handsomely in the end anyway. And I think we have the diplomatic core here in Wellington. It's the relationships with embassies and consulates is very important. And we have a duty to play a proper role in international diplomacy with many, many countries throughout the world. And I actually was reflecting on some of the comments that were made or the, what I took as slurs against the Chinese government earlier in that debate. And it did make me think that we haven't properly explored our role in international diplomacy as the Wellington City Council and the capital city. And I actually think it would be very wise for us to ask the Ministry of Foreign and Affairs and Trade to give us some training in that because it's not intuitive. It might be the councillor Young who's growing up in a diplomatic family, but it's not intuitive to all of us. Not, maybe, maybe it was a different, they're working from a high bar and they've brought you down. But yeah, I guess I just wanted to say that I do, I do think that the harm and grief that we put the Chinese community through because of the treatment in the Chinese garden was unnecessary and is something that I genuinely hope we can learn from. And I think that there is an opportunity to learn. I also just wanted to comment on, I was horrified by 16% rates increase. It sort of came out of the blue and I've sort of read it in bed on, at eight twenty on last Friday night. And I was like, what? We're putting rates up by 16%. Where has this come from? And I think, you know, I'm really pleased that we've managed to find a way to spread debt over a longer period in order to not have residents facing such a big rates rise in year one. So we are going now to a rates rise that is consistent with what we consulted Wellingtonians on. And I think that is the thing, a fair thing to do, and that is acting with integrity. And I, I really support that. And I guess I also want to say to those who perhaps don't come from the same political persuasion as me, that there's a lot of comments made that we should cut overheads, we should cut the VAT, you know, that the rates increase is too high, but no amendments have been brought to reduce that rates increase. So to me, that's quite a lazy way to criticise and not bring a constructive outcome. So we saw we had a 16% rates rise. We've now got, with the help of the mayor, amendments that get that back down to 13.5%. And I guess the reason there aren't those amendments that reduce that rates increase is because it's hard. And it's hard because it's hard. We've got so many challenges facing our city. But for me, this is a back to basics long term plan. And I, I'm pleased to support the, I think just about all of the proposals that the mayor's put forward. And I thank him for listening to us. I think he did listen. He asked us what we all thought. And, you know, it might have been, I was asleep when the email came through, but, but, you know, it wasn't surprising to me what was included. And my criticism last time was, it was surprising and shocking. This time it wasn't. You were trying to find a way, Mayor Foster, to get us back down to 13.5%. And I'm very pleased that we got there. And I want, I'd forgotten one other thing I was going to say. But I think, oh, the, the Build Heritage and Centre Fund, I guess I just would say on that, that one of the things that I'm very conscious about is that we are removing something and that does feel hard for communities. And I do think that there is a public policy problem with earthquake prone buildings in the city. And the deadlines are looming and we need to do something about that. And I absolutely accept that. We do need to do something about those deadlines. But my problem is that the fund doesn't deliver an outcome to address those deadlines. So I, and councillor Pannett said, please don't move an amendment that says government needs to do something differently. But I just want to kind of put it on the record for councillor Pannett to hear and others, that the timeframes that are legally mandated at present for earthquake prone buildings are unrealistic. It's not going to occur and it needs to change. But for me, the Building Resilience Fund and the Built Heritage and Centre Fund is not the way to deliver that change. And I did just want to point out something that I have, had asked the mayor to include, which is that we do withhold 250,000 of the saving of removal, of saved from the removal of those funds to increase internal capacity of a resilience advisory they need to know how to enter this very, very complicated and difficult situation. And to me, that is a valid use of collective resources. Thanks.
I'm glad you got a chance to have a wee say on the Chinese Garden, after all. So thank you for that, councillor Fitzsimons, councillor Paul.
Well, tena tato. All right. Where do you even start? Well, first of all, it's a privilege to be, you know, me right now, being a, a 24-year-old, young Maori Wellingtonian, being able to have an input into our 10-year plan, you know, that's, that's very special to me. And so I want to make sure that I can cover off as many kind of perspectives from those communities as I can. But I guess I would say that, before our dinner break, some of the views that I heard around the table, I have to say they are quite out of touch. And I think that local government has, and these long-term plans have traditionally been, you know, to serve homeowners and those who are privileged enough to participate with our processes that we put forward. And I think that's reflected in the fact that in a city of 200,000 people, only 2,000 people made a submission on this long-term plan. And that's obviously no fault of the officers, and that's no, you know, that might be saying that this is a great long-term plan and people don't feel upset by it. But that's, you know, that really demonstrates the really low engagement with local government in this country. And I think that it is changing, and I hope that we will pursue things like extending the voting age to 16-year-olds, and that we will take a leading role in that as a council. But really, I think it highlights the fact that the purpose of local government does need to change. And it's changing in the sense that the representation around the table is evolving all around the country, not just here in Wellington. And as that evolves, new issues are coming to the table. And so this long-term plan looks different in that it deals with some of those issues that my generation are passionate about. So climate change and city safety and honouring Te Tarete o Waitangi. And, you know, as, again, as a young person around the table, I can, I can see here that we are dealing with historic issues, you know, our water infrastructure, our massive social housing bill, the housing crisis in general, a lot of those historic issues. But for me, it's really important that in dealing with those, we're not neglecting issues that will be more material down the road. And specifically, I'm talking about climate change there and the decline of our native species. And, and honouring Te Tarete o Waitangi. So for me, I, I feel that the concerns that have been raised here consistently around the table have been appropriately recognised and acknowledged in this budget. So I really want to give a heartfelt thank you to officers for reflecting those ambitions and for being committed to not creating more crises and issues for my generation to deal with. Although with this amount of borrowing, I do accept that we will probably still be paying for it down the road, but whatever, all good. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's all good. So that's, yeah, I guess that's what I wanted to say. I think, I think, yes, the role of local government is changing, I think that's reflected in this budget when it comes to climate change. Though, that the cycleway infrastructure that we are going to implement through this, this plan is going to have massive effects, not only in influencing other towns and cities around the country, but in making sure that people are able to shift modes and are able to try out different forms of transport. The Te Atakura budget, again, it wasn't even controversial, like, you know, it wasn't even, there weren't, there wasn't some sophisticated lobby trying to remove or reduce the funding to climate change. I think that reflects on our city, again, as being a progressive capital city. City safety, I really just wanted to acknowledge the 2,000, sorry, the almost 3,000 people who participated in that survey, that Sophia and Ella brought around our table. I wanted to acknowledge their, their asks of us and, and respond to your points, councillor Panet, about the lighting and stuff. Actually, we actually do just need to listen to young people, you know, this is what they were asking for. It wasn't just them and their 3,000 people survey, which is more participation than our long-term plan had. It's actually also the rally where 500 people were there on Courtney Place who demanded for those things. So it's not actually just about changing the lighting on Courtney Place, it's actually about providing more funding to sexual violence response and prevention organisations who have been chronically underfunded, as you know, as a person who has been, you know, led an NGO, to be able to respond to those issues. But it's also about working with bars and restaurants to make sure that they are making safe environments for their patrons. And, and the other massive, so, so, so $7.7 million, that's amazing, that's epic, I want to thank every officer, and particularly Muanamaki for making that happen. And, and again, the honouring Te Tarete o Waitangi, obviously councillor Day has just, again, been just such a champion for it in our space here at council. And I just think it's extraordinary that not only will we get Maori wards, but we'll get guaranteed mana finoa representation and remuneration as well. So we are really, I think, leading in so many of these different areas. It's a privilege and I'm proud to be a part of this council and part of this long-term plan. And I think with us changing the business that we address, we actually do need to address the really serious issue, and that is the way that local government is funded and financed. And, you know, as, as a country, local government only gets just over 10% of all spending in the country, whereas other countries in Europe and stuff who tackle climate change, city safety, all of these big issues, they get around 30%. So hopefully with this local government review that Nanaia Mahuta has commenced, we will have a big conversation. And I want congestion charging, once our water infrastructure is all sorted out, I think we do need to have a serious conversation about water metering, but most of all, we need more of the national spend. So, yeah, I think the future is local government, I'm almost done, don't worry. In terms of the treaty, this is the number one way that we can be partners, because we know that it's not Crown and Maori, actually, there was never Maori, it was hapu and iwi across the country. And hapu and iwi should be working with their local council, and that should be the symbol of partnership. And I think in 20 years' time, when it is 200 years post Te Tarete o Waitangi, we will be in a strong position where our councils and our iwi and hapu will work hand in hand to deliver the ambitions that Aotipuna signed when they signed the Treaty of Waitangi. So, yeah, noraida, tena tato ka tua. And thank you everybody for all of your hard work into this plan that I think we can all be proud of.
Done, Tam, well said. Councillor, councillor Paul. Councillor Matthews.
So some amazing kooritou after dinner. I'm going to be unusual here, and so I'm going to speak briefly, and I'm actually going to speak briefly, because I do have an eye on the clock. And that, I guess I just want to, like, quickly cover off some of the things that people are saying out there about this. And I think that the cycleways decision has kind of, you know, obviously, it's a very important and significant decision. But we do need to keep it in perspective, and other people do as well when they're looking at our budget. This is a water budget. And if anybody tries to say that we're, we're prioritising cycleways over water, they can rack off, you know? It's just not, it's, yeah, rack off your mole. Yeah, it is, taken from Aussie soap operas. So, and, and also, if they're trying to say that we're spending more on cycleways than housing, that is also untrue. And, you know, so that money is in there for the social housing, and, you know, it's good that we got to that point. And probably for me, there isn't enough in there for housing. That is, you know, when we look at, think that we all kind of look at what we've got and not got in here, you know, I'm obsessed with housing, we haven't got the solution in here. But if anybody from central government wants to diss what Wellington City Council is doing, I stand proudly behind the fact, especially if we can deliver a good spatial plan, that we are pulling the levers that we can. And with the te kaianga, you know, and the things that we are doing, what we can. And, you know, we have to acknowledge the local government role might be more limited than we would like. But I, I, you know, I would defend us. I think I might have just done. And very quickly on the living wage, I'm just really happy that we're continuing that journey in a living wage city. I want to report this week that Victoria University have announced they're paying their cleaners the living wage. And I'm really hopeful that they will come on board as the first accredited university. And that's a great kind of city profile for us. And I also just want to quickly, I want to thank everybody, all my colleagues, for, you know, the kind of learning process that we've been through. But I particularly, I want to thank councillor Fitzsimons for the, coming up with the, the idea for the spreading the repayments, which has enabled us, because that was one goal we all shared, that, you know, that we wanted to keep rates down to what we'd consulted about. But also, we recognise that we have to invest in Wellington. And so it's enabled us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Matthews. So councillor Day.
Oh, tene te mahima, hakia kato. We all seem to feel a bit energised after dinner, don't we? We've got some kaya now tummies. I just want to start by acknowledging the huge effort that went into the public engagement through this process. The engagement team worked super hard and were all over the city. They're not actually here, because we've gone so long. But I, I really enjoyed going out and joining them at their various engagements and had fantastic conversations with people out in the community. And I have to say, like other people have said, the one thing that was always said was, please sort out the water. And, you know, no one was arguing with us that that was a really important issue. I also really want to acknowledge the work of the LTP team, so Sarah and your team for working super hard, and Baz and Stephen, so, so a huge amount of work. And it really has been a challenging budget to work through. And sometimes the stars line up in a good way, and sometimes they line up in a challenging way. And we've had the challenging one put in front of us. But actually, I think we're getting there. And, and that's, you know, it doesn't always have to be neat and tidy. But, and so I think I do want to thank you, Mayor Foster, because you have responded to a lot of different things coming at you, and that is hard. And thank you very much for, you know, doing your best to guide us through that. So thank you. I too am really happy to see that we've got something, and we've got a significant amount in for city housing. It is really important. Obviously, we've got papers coming up next week, which are going to be, I think, challenging to discuss. Yeah, they're going to be, it is going to, we haven't solved the issue by any means, but I do feel comfortable thinking that we've put some budget in there to sort out the big, the big issue that we're facing right now. I also just want to say, I too welcome people organising. As a teacher, I've always said to children, if you want to see change, do something about it. And so we have communities who are doing something about it, and they've done it really well and with integrity as well. I think they've come back time and time again to tell us and remind us of an important pathway that we need to take. And I do want to acknowledge that this budget does start to honour Te Tarete o Waitangi. We, I really want to acknowledge and thank my colleagues for the $29 million budget that we've agreed to for Maori development. And I want to acknowledge the Te Ropotama team, Kairepa, and your team for the engagement that you've done with Maori community. So we had the hui around the long-term plan, Maori wards, and a number of other ko'apapa, which were fantastic hui, and then some actual targeted hui now around how to put that development plan together. And was out at Takapua Hia last night, and a really amazing group, must have been 60-plus people there, are really excited to talk about what we can do. And they even redirected part of the conversation into what partnership looks like, which was a really amazing kooritou and quite inspiring and challenging, which I think is important. When we're starting to have challenging conversations, we know we're going in the right direction. And I do want to acknowledge councillor Paul, you're right, that we need to get to the point where we're having these hapu conversations. So that's one of the things, I think, that I hope the local government review can do some, some work in acknowledging, is that at the moment, we are really working with sort of a large entity that we consider iwi, so this large natural grouping, which actually doesn't honour the whanau and the hapu that live within an area and need to be able to interact with councils. Councillor Fitzsimons, I want to thank you for coming up with a solution to get us out of a problem. I think we were all feeling a bit, a bit knocked over the head when we saw the rates increase, and that is because our staff have done a great job of looking at how we can solve some challenges in our city. And I thank them for doing that. And I thank you for coming up with a solution that, that actually just makes sense. And, you know, that we, we do want to be mindful of the rates increases that we are putting on community, because I do agree councillor Young, for some people, it is actually, it's a stretch too far, and we do need to always be thinking about that. And I'm pleased that we also are looking at ways that we can support people who actually, you know, do need other ways of being able to pay their, their rates. I do want to also acknowledge, as deputy mayor Frey said, and councillor Panet said earlier about the earthquake, you know, that actually people do forget quite quickly that we had a significant earthquake. And I remember it last trainee, and because it was, of course, something that very much impacted on me as a new councillor, having not been here for very long and having that feeling of, I can't imagine what it was like as a mayor, having that feeling of, oh, I've got to do something about this. But it was interesting, because we really didn't see the water issues coming up straight away. But actually, you could see that so much of that has been impacted by the fact that the earthquake did impact on our pipes. But by the time we're starting to see that, everybody's forgotten about it. And it's the same with some of our other things, you know, we had the big slip in oil, you can't doubt that some of these things are impacted by earthquakes. So we do have a job to remind people that, you know, these things have an impact on our city that goes beyond the time that they necessarily remember it. But, you know, we're dealing with it, which is good. I want to acknowledge the work on the Poneke promise that has come together quite quickly, but really effectively, an amazing community working together, bringing lots of community organisations and businesses and council together. And, you know, for me, it is about lighting, it is about design, it is about faripaku being in the wrong place and not being properly designed. You know, like, yes, we do need to work on the behaviours and, and helping people know how, how to behave appropriately, and also how to deal with those things when it's not going well. So Don't Give CS, really awesome campaign. And I fully support any sort of education we can do, but we can't just rely on one form, we have to make sure we're looking at all the different options for keeping people safe in the city. And that leads on well to the youth hub. And I've, I'm really excited, because like I said, we, you know, we want people to speak up when there are issues and there are gaps in our city. And our young people have spoken really clearly to us that not having a central library and not having Reading Cinema has had a big impact on them, and that a youth hub will make a really big difference. And so we're showing that we do listen, and that we're coming up with, with options to help people. And I think, you know, when people in the community say they don't feel like talking to council because we don't listen, I actually have to say we are always listening, and this whole process has been very much about listening. The hard thing is, and this is sometimes hard for people in the community to understand, is that the compromises sometimes don't always fall in our favour. And we have that as councillors, sometimes we don't get the things we want, and sometimes we do. But actually, at the end of the day, we're trying to work on, on our own value system and trying to balance a lot of different things. And I think everybody here is very highly focused and working hard in, in doing the best that they can. So thank you everybody, and I will be supporting all of this.
Thank you councillor Day. Councillor O'Neill.
Kia ora councillors, I will try and squish this into three minutes, what a challenge. So at the beginning of this year, a lot of questions were posed to us from outside submitters. And within the COVID crisis, we knew there was quite a substantial challenge ahead of us. Are we courageous enough to create a positive, vibrant city and do the hard mahi and invest and potentially put our jobs on the line for a higher rates rise but a more sustainable city? Some submitters came in and talked, talked to us about the position that they viewed that we were in, and looked at a large quote of underinvestment from previous councils. One quote I have here is, we only hope to have the standard of living that our elders took for granted, and we have a shared vision for a better place. A city that cares for all its residents and ensures equity. These are the principles of many of our values around this table, why we have chosen to invest with a higher rates rise. A few key projects, Island Bay Cycleway, Chinese Garden, Makata Community Coast project, and the skate community. For some feels like we have given the community false hope in the past, and I am proud to see this funding reinstated. I am really, really proud and really excited that we have taken rapid moves to establish a robust water system. Mana Ote Wai is becoming increasingly and incredibly important, and we have sought assurances about green infrastructure, given Wellington water is such a high priority in our own budgets, that we hold that obligation to, to our largest investment, that this will become sustainable over time in our local communities. For the natural environment, I am incredibly proud to hand over a portfolio within this long-term plan and key funding set aside. Another submitter said, climate change is the largest health concern facing our generation. We are a part of Tetaio, we are not separate for it. And as a, a staff member said when I went to a book launch of, sorry, a, a book event at Tiawa the other week, we will either live or we will die with nature, but the way that we choose to leave it when we go is just as important. For others, I want to just briefly take pause to thank all the amazing submitters, and for each and every hour we've listened to you. For many people coming to our table, we were surprised but delighted by the organising. I want to pay special attention to submitters from the skate community who brought a particular kind of levity to our hearings. We've been working with officers and, and our, our joint portfolio leads as well as joint interests councillor Paul and councillor Day and councillor Wolf, to figure out how we can get better investment for skate parks within our city. This would be an awesome legacy if I was to leave one, to get an Olympic-sized and up-to-scratch skate park in Keburni, the very place I grew up, how sick would that be? Submitters came in, and I just want to pay a special mahi to Kevin Francis and Bailey Temapi for their organising within the community. Kevin racked up a submission of, I think, of about 27 pages, and went all around Wellington taking photos of the parks and the architecture there that could be more skate-friendly. It was a really clear demonstration of a very humble community that just wanted to It was a really clear demonstration of a very humble community that just wanted to be recognised, heard and thought about. So yes, pleased to reward that with $1.5 million in capex funding and, and that to be slotted in there and officers to come back within the next annual plan to talk about how we're going to spend that money. Lastly, I just wanted to talk about the Poneke Promise and its role in ending homelessness. Councillor Pannett, you raised certain ideas about making us, our, our city safer, but something so unique about the Poneke Promise is that it seeks to bring a whole range of organisations together. It's not just council dictating to the rest of the city what we want others to do. The, many of the initiatives in here, like Te Wahi Afina, Pull Together, DCM, MSD, we've made incredible bounds over the last year to strengthen our relationship between Corrections, MSD and our other support providers and I'm really proud of this council and their role as an umbrella. I believe that this is a really worthwhile investment. I'm really pleased other councillors have not bought cuts to this project as I believe this is one of the only true ways to bring mana back to our city if we're all on the same page. This long-term plan demonstrates that we're all present on the same meeting ground and I'm really, really proud of this council here today. And I just want to finish by thanking you, Mayor Andy Foster, for your diligence and making sure that we are still here and all in one piece at the end of this. But in all honesty, yeah, this is probably one of the largest jugglings of money I will ever get to handle. And so I, you know what, it's pretty awesome and it was once gained a really big privilege at my age to be looking at these investments like the ones in front of us. Thank you.
You're so right councillor O'Neill. Councillor Foon, you are on the list.
I will try and keep it brief.
We'll put the three.
No, no. Councillor O'Neill, it's even a big privilege for me, who's got a few more years on you to be sitting around this table. And I did reflect on a perfect, can't beat Wellington on a good night last night, cycling around the waterfront. What a, what a privilege it is for me to be around this table, you know, designing the plan for Wellington for the future. And that, you know, for, for my kids and their friends and seeing the way that they'll use the city. So I just want to acknowledge that. I actually really want to acknowledge our officers, our ELT and Barbara, your leadership. I've really felt supported, I've really felt your patience and your openness and willingness to help us get to where we want to be. It's probably why we're all able to sit here and maybe even have a glass of wine with each other later on. But you know, like, I really, yeah, I'll shout. But yeah, I just, I just really want to acknowledge all of that. And Barbara, your design and getting the right ELT to enable us. Maori partnerships has been a major one for me personally and just, I never thought that would happen in my time while I was here. I really didn't believe it when I came to council. So thank you for enabling that and Karepa, your, your work there too. So yeah, it's just reflecting back on that. I think just thank you, of course councillor Fitzsimons for finding a solution. Yeah, I've, I've just got to acknowledge that was a bit of a moment over the weekend and I just had to do my yoga, just breathe, just keep breathing. But yeah, finding a solution because I think it's around these, the smaller, the not, not, the not big seven that we've done. But actually, those are the beautiful things that bring the quality of life and the intricacy that is Wellington. And so just acknowledging, you know, we've brought up a few here tonight, the skate community, all of that, it's so vital. The Living Wage Fund, like, I think that, that's going to be amazing. But actually, and for me, I'm just going to bring up the Community Composting Fund and the Sustainable Food Network Plan. Like, that, these types of things are the, the magic that brings all of this together to help our community build and strengthen. So, but I do have to laugh, I never thought that I would spend my time on council talking about, talking about the bread, but actually bringing it down to poo and then finding and understanding how it works and where it goes and going up to where it goes and then how it goes. And I've just even recently asked to go down to the landfill to look at what happens to it down there. So, and then there's a whole other community that's really interested in it as well, who would have known? But there you go. So that's been an amazing journey. But I do also want to thank all of my colleagues for the work here. I've enjoyed working with you, I'm not saying goodbye though, and particularly those that will remain open-minded and were, have been able to change their mind on some issues. Mayor Foster, I really thank you for that because that gives us hope in whatever we want going forward to, yeah, great. So thank you, everybody. That's me. Wow, my goodness, me, we're ending in love, we're going to sing a way after this, Tiara Ha, I think. Seriously, not tonight maybe. So after this, I, unless... No, we won't, but unless anyone's got anything further to say, I think I'm handing back to, to the mayor for his right of reply.
I have 95 pages notes, not, not really. But look, but there are, look, there are, there are a few things. And I did actually, I avoided saying anything during the rest of the debate. I mean, I asked a couple of questions, but I deliberately avoided saying anything during the rest of the debate in the vain hope that we might be finished by 5.30, but that, that proved completely, completely forlorn. Um, look, so a few things, again, look, I'm going to reiterate first of all, my thanks to Barbara and all of your team. And I see her in particular in terms of the finance side of things, but, but all of you have done an amazing job. So I really appreciate that. Reiterate again, my thanks to all the people who made submissions. 2,000 submissions actually, Tammy's, councillor, councillor Paul, actually is quite a lot. I think there's been one time we've had more than that, but most, most times it's been well shy of that. So that's, that's not bad going. And it shows that our, our city was, was actually, I think, very engaged in what we do. And, and I also want to thank you, all of you, because we did actually, you know, I think we all looked at them and got 16%, oh gosh, that's not very good. And I've got to say, it was actually when we sat down and when we sat down here on the Tuesday, which is why I wanted to do it, because I wanted to know where people were at. Because there wasn't much point in me going, I want to get it down to 13.5 and go, I'm going to get outvated. Right, brilliant. But, but, but you actually all said, we actually want to stick with what we went out with. We want to give our communities that, that assurance. And I think that, that gave me a lot of confidence and I think we've come up with a, in a, in a very good space. Okay, so some of the things that people have specifically, specifically raised, councillor, councillor Calvert. I'm, I'm going to be as careful as anybody. I think you said that consensus hasn't happened, but actually, I think I'm listening to people by and large. We're not all going to agree with everything, but I think actually by and large, people are going, actually, we can live with this. And there's bits in this I'm going to go, I'm not particularly thrilled with, you know, there's bits more than that or less than that, whatever. But it is, you know, this is democracy and at the end of the day, it is, but votes around the table that actually make a difference. And, and you know, I think with one of them in particular, cycling was always going to be a debate point. And, you know, I think most of us probably read the tea leaves and said, well, we know the way that's going to go. So I tried to put something in there which was a good step towards that, but you know, that you wanted to go further, that's okay. That's cool, that's, that's democracy. And you did point out the difference between the campaign approach and the survey approach. That's one of the reasons I did want a survey. And that survey showed us something which was different to the, if you like, to the submissions. And that gave us a position to be able to argue for or against, I suppose. In terms of additional projects, you also mentioned, this is important, additional projects that have not been consulted on. Actually, they have been. Because we specifically went out, if you remember, and consulted on Ahutini and on the children and young person strategy. And we would have done the economic strategy, but it's just more complicated, it's taken longer. With a deliberate intent that they would come back in time to be able to respond to them and put something into the LTP if necessary. So we're actually exactly responding to those things. And you've got a choice, the way that I've structured this, you've got a choice to vote for or against any individual component. So you can go, can I take Z separately and I'll vote against it or for or whatever. Councillor Young, look, I agree with you about the rates level and that's my point. You can say, I can pull it down by voting against some of those other things. So, you know, and, and each of us can make our call in that way. And you said this, I mean, no, no serious commitment to cutting overheads. Look, we could always go harder, but do recognise that the organisation has taken $8.6 million out. So they, you know, that's not insignificant, but it's not as much as I know that many other councils would have gone to. Councillor Conde, this budget, yes, it was always going to be a massive challenge. And actually, where we started from, if you think about where we started from, 8% of what we've got is COVID, directly COVID related, 8%. And there's another 3% which is depreciation rate. So we started at 11 before we did anything. So in actual fact, we've only added two and a half to that. So we haven't, we haven't actually done too badly in, in that context, especially given what we're trying to do in terms of those big, those big things. And they are big things. And you said, and I think absolutely right, we don't, you don't want to kick the can down the road. And I think that councils in the past have to a degree kicked the can down the road, either knowingly or unknowingly. I think, I think the water one probably was unknowingly, but I think, for example, social housing to me was knowingly. I think that was avoided. And so we are going to front up to these ones and we're going to actually have to tackle them and we are. And if you look at what we've got in there, and you said that the community wants us to do the work and I agree with you, I think the community has very strongly come back and said, "We want the foundations of the city to be solid, that means our pipes, it means that our buildings need to be fixed and that is exactly what we're doing." And so we've, we've landed with a whole lot of things all at once. Obviously, we had the impacts of earthquake coming through over a period of time. We wouldn't be in this building if it wasn't for the Kaukuru earthquake. We wouldn't be fixing the library if it wasn't for the Kaukuru earthquake. That has cost us a fortune. We wouldn't be fixing the pipes if they didn't start breaking in the same way, you know, so that brought it front and centre. And obviously, we wouldn't have had some of those costs if we didn't have a global pandemic, which of course, nobody saw coming. So we've had a whole bunch of things all happening at once and we have to deal with them. We have to deal with sludge. If we don't deal with sludge, what do we do with the landfill? We're going to have to expand it a lot more. Will we get consent for doing that? Going to be difficult, you know. So we've got to do these things and we've got to do them all now and we are facing up to all of them. That is what we are doing. And then the other ones that I'll mention there, in terms of venues, we had some really strong feedback from our arts and culture community for many, many years about venues. And I'm really pleased we're actually putting some money there to make it easier for the arts and culture sector to be able to use those venues. And if you think about what we are about, it is about the dynamism of the central city, the, the arts, culture, the events which we're supporting so strongly, but also about making it a safe place. And so one of the other things which has come through over the last few months and some great work and again, one in particular, recognise you, but the rest of the team, is, and it is not just us, but it is a partnership. Partnership with hospitality, with police, it'll be with, you know, government agencies, the non-government agencies, together. Coming together, young people advocating, some of those people actually are young, no, some of them aren't, some of them are. But, but it's a whole bunch of people coming together to solve a problem in our city. And that is what we're doing and this is us playing our part in doing that. Councillor Pannett, just in terms of, oh no, I don't think I need to respond to that, but I'll come to, come to briefly. Councillor Fitzsimons, thank you, thank you for your creativity around the, the thinking around the flexible thing. And Sarah in particular, so thank you for your, your work that you did together, I think it's really great. Look, I've acknowledged with the Chinese, with the Chinese garden, I've acknowledged that actually, we were moving at pace before. Should have raised it different way, yep, okay. The relationship, you're interestingly, you raised the relationship with embassies, that is really important. It's one of the things I love about being mayor, is the amount of time I spend with, with the ambassadorial group. They are a fabulous group of people. I was just looking back, how many, you know, the last week is five different, five different things with different, you know, embassies etcetera. In fact, last night, we took the, we took the chief minister from ACT and where did we take him? You know, we had a function here, then we took him to the Rainbow Community AGM and they were just thrilled. So that was really brilliant. And then, and then we went to the, the High Commission afterwards. So, you know, those are the things we do, those relationships actually are really strong. And I've got to say, they haven't been as strong in the past, they, they got dropped a bit. They are really strong and they are growing and I think we can make a lot more out of that. So that's something I, I really treasure. Just, just the Built Heritage Fund, so I will deal with that just quickly at the moment. To me, I think, for me, I'm, I think the heritage side is important and it's important because of the public good to protecting heritage. That's why we list things, we list them for public good reasons. The private buildings which are non-heritage, I don't buy as much, I never did on that particular one. And I think the, the answer to that for me is much more the work that's being done on the Rate Power Financing Scheme, which I know Sarah has been particularly involved in doing. I think there is a solution to help people with that. But I think the other bit is, regardless of which way you vote, one of the things that comes up time and time again from building owners is, we don't know what to do. So that point that you made councillor Fitzsimons about access to information and advice, for a lot of people, that's actually the most important, but even more than the grant is. Councillor Paul. Think I've covered all of those things? No, 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 I'm not, I'm not.
Just say kapai.
I'm not, I'm not.
Just say kapai.
No, the only thing, the only thing, the only thing I would say is you're absolutely right about the, it's different. I'm not, because I'm not going to repeat stuff that I've already covered with other people. But you're absolutely right about the, the future of local government funding, financing, etcetera. And that actually, that actually is a really big issue coming up. And we have said at a, at a national council level, we want it actually to be a conversation, not about just the future of local government, but the future of government. Where are the things, where is the best place for things to fit? What should fit locally and what should fit nationally? And it doesn't mean that everything that is currently done nationally should stay national. So there's going to be some interesting conversations, see how, you know, how real that conversation is going to be. Councillor Matthews, thank you, yes, this is a water budget, it's an infrastructure budget, I completely agree with that. And good response, if anyone from central government wants to diswell in the city council, we're doing what we, what we count on housing. Where they can help us is to stop discriminating against our housing tenants and against councils. If they can do that, they would make the world of difference to our ability to deliver not only the social housing we've got and to fix it up, but also to deliver more social housing. That is what we need from our government to step up. Absolute, oh, we are, we are absolute, absolutely we are. Councillor Day, thank you, thank you for your work, thank you for your work particularly on the tētērētē and I'm really looking forward to having iwi members around the, around our table. Councillor O'Neill, and actually, it was really great to have the event that we had today. I think, you know, it was, it was the right thing for us to go and support, absolutely was. I would have, I think it would have sent a terrible message if we hadn't. Councillor O'Neill, thank you for your work in the natural environment and for the, what you just talked about, the Poneke Promise, that is about partnership, so kia ora on that one. And thanks for all of your kind comments generally. And I am going to, oh, two other little things because I didn't pick them up. The Chinese garden, my issue was always about that six and a half is not going to do the job. But we've got in there that we've got to do some more work on it to get, to get the right kind of number and we'll have further advice on that. And then the final one is just in terms of Makarabeech, thank you councillor Foon for raising that. Makarabeech, Makarabeech. Thank you councillor Foon for raising that because I meant to do that and I neglected to do so. We had an incredibly good engagement with that community. Basically, you have the entire community out because it's a small community. The whole lot of them were out there and they were engaging really brilliantly with us and then we dropped them. And that's not right. You cannot go and raise those kind of expectations. The intent is that they will have to chip in. It is about what do we protect that is the public realm and what do they have to protect, which is the private realm? It's not about protecting individual people's houses and us paying for that as a, as a, as a city. They will have to do their bit. So there's more work to be done on that, but at least this is a signal which says to them, we haven't forgotten. So everybody, thank you once again and look forward to, to the vote. And congratulations to everybody on getting us this far.
Lovely. Right, so now, no, we can't. But I am going to ask if there's any need to take anything separately and...
Yep.
Well, we could do it, we could do it through, but I don't know how many, how much need there is to do that. So how many need to be taken separately? Diane, what would you like to take separately?
Well, can I just raise number 12, sorry, number 11?
Yep.
It refers to a number of items under proposed changes to the operating expenses under number 13. So A, B, D and E, are those in, already included in 11?
Actually, I did get some advice, which I probably should have shared with you before I asked that question, that A to D need to be taken as one and I think they're pretty much need, they're kind of givens, we need to vote for them. A to D, so A, B, C and D.
Under 13?
Yes, under 13. And then the other thing is that S, item S, item V and item X all need to be taken as one. Can we just remind ourselves what they are? S, can you, can you show us S please?
Okay.
S is weather tight homes. V and X should be taken as one, not T because, not T.
And can you, can you take the savings first before we take the spending?
So we need, we need to do T and U separately. All right, shall we just work through it? Sometimes it's easier.
I'm happy to go for 1 to 8.
All right, let's have a look at it. Please, yeah, we are a wee bit. Yes, okay. Right, that's a good start. I'm going to take that suggestion. We're going to do, everyone look at your pages so you know what we're doing. Yep, the handout, it's the up-to-date thing. I'm sorry, we just need to stay calm because we are nearly there. But I haven't got my piece of paper, so that's a little bit of an issue. Right. I want a glass of wine. Okay. All right. I think we've got receiving information, noting processes. Three is in parallel, we've got, we note the consultation, we note the public fever. Okay, so one to eight. One to eight is very operational and done. I vote that we, I move... Yep, so we need to vote on it, one to eight. That's perfect, unanimous. Number nine, can you please, please stay focused?
I'm happy to take nine and ten.
Nine and ten could be together. Yes. Yes. So we're, nine and ten together. We're agreeing the recommended funding options for the seven issues and the parking fees, as we've already been through and debated previously. And the ten is the new cycleways option. Does anyone want to take nine and ten separately?
Yes.
Okay, nine.
I mean, I'm happy to take them together.
You are happy to take them together?
Yes.
Okay. Right, we just need to honestly keep a cool, calm head here. So we are doing nine and ten right now. Are you not happy to take nine and ten separately? Okay. Okay, that's fine. So we'll do nine. It gets complicated, that's for sure. So we're doing nine. When we get a chance. Aiona, you need to try again. And Jill, yeah, that's done now. All right, so that's carried. Now we're going to do ten, which is the option four, rather than option three, for delivering, so... No, that's... Is it really, really important to you? Okay. All right. So which were the ones, which were the ones that you needed to be separated? Okay, one and five. We'll do ten, one and five. One and five, ten, one and five.
Five, yes, that's four.
Don't you dare say anything right now. Ten, one and five, okay, we're nearly there. We're going to vote, we're then going to vote on the rest of it. Okay, so we're going to do ten, one and five separately, then vote for everything else, which includes the heating. Okay? So ten, one and five. Basically, I think it's not going to be there. Oh, I did, I thought... It's, it's red, Laurie? Mayor Foster, do you really think we can separate it out that much?
Sorry. Damn honest. Just you wait.
I'm really sorry, but I kind of feel like you either agree with the rest of it or you don't. You know what I mean? So with the rest of ten, so I'm just going to say basically, we're voting on the rest of ten. I know, I'm sorry, but I think it gets a bit, gets a bit difficult. The rest of ten, which is, which is the statement at the beginning, plus two, three and four. You're going to vote no.
Either vote against it or...
We are voting now for the remainder of item ten. Okay, right, is that done? Malcolm, you're voting no to this, I believe. You're voting no to the rest of this.
Could we put this to the end and then those who don't really care?
Well, they want to separate all of this out from the actual...
Our lives is a lot easier if you actually vote, put two, three and four, which we can vote for. But that's the headline, which some of us don't want to vote for.
Okay.
I think we're entitled to ask for that, so please.
All right, Andy, what do you want?
I'm not the only one.
So what don't you want to vote for?
The headline, agree to adopt option four.
Okay. Can we start, can we actually start again on number ten? I'm sorry, but this has got, like, we do want to get this right. So we'll clear number ten off the record. And I'm sorry, this is taking a while. Just have to be patient.
If we're going to take and set blue, might as well.
The headline, Andy, which one do you want that to go with? Which package?
Just stick it on its own.
Well, I don't think that works. It does, okay.
Of course it works. No, no, just, just vote.
All right, well...
Just vote for the headline, yea or nay? Easy. Easy.
I think it's, I think it's actually quite clear. You guys don't want to vote for. Let's actually even try and do this manually. Yeah, so...
Because we're probably okay for the rest of it, I think.
So what do you actually, what do you want to vote for?
So from my perspective, and I think Malcolm's nodding, I'm happy to vote for I, little one, little two, little three, little four, little five, but not the headline.
Are you worded it this way?
No, I didn't. This is Tams. No, this is Tams.
Oh, really?
So I didn't, I didn't.
You simplified it.
This one's quite a big one and you all, you all did debate it, so.
I don't actually see how we can just vote for the headline, but... Okay, right. I'm going to start with ten again. I'm actually going to vote for the headline first.
Cool, good, thank you.
Headline first.
Cool. That's all we asked.
We should have done it this way at the beginning. Lesson learned.
We did, we did.
Me. It is. That's right. Headline first, we've done. That is carried. Now we will do one and five again, just to make sure we're clear. Déjà vu, sorry about that.
I think you can do the rest all, Malcolm? Malcolm, can we do the rest all together? Yeah? Okay, right, okay, right, okay.
We have, we're doing it again just for clarity, sorry.
We love cycling. Okay.
One and five.
Ten, one and five, yep. Take two. Yes. All over. There was a rugby league commentator, I think, wasn't it? They've got it English.
Oh, sorry, I did, it's all right, okay. Okay, that is lost. And now we will do, sorry, that's carried. All right. Two, three and four. People are very panicky. I think we can actually do eleven, twelve and thirteen. No? Okay, let's do eleven and twelve. Why not? All right, let's do eleven. Eleven. Well, try to be. That is carried, twelve. Number twelve, please. Okay. Can we vote for A, B, C, D and E of thirteen altogether?
Yep.
Yep. Check. Are you happy?
Yep.
Okay, it's thirteen, A, B, C, D and E. Really is degenerating. One might think we'd already had the wine. All right. Are we making few actually, councillor Sparr? And that has been carried unanimously. Right, now we're doing the Poonaki Promise. Is, is everyone happy to take all the Poonaki Promise items together, which is F, G, H and I?
No, I want F separate.
Okay, you want to take them separately?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm happy with the other ones together, but I want to take F separately.
Which ones are you not happy with? F?
F.
Okay, we'll take F separately. All right, F. That's carried. We'll now do G. Now doing the Poonaki Promise G. That's carried. And now we're doing Poonaki Promise I, streetscape improvements. Jenny, for some reason, yeah. And that's unanimous. That was the streetscape improvements, yeah. We're now doing the youth hub and spaces, which is J. It's okay, it's nearly done. We can agree that it's been dealt with. And that is carried. And we're now doing better youth engagement, which is item K. And that's carried. We're now doing L, which is the Ahotini Package. This is the Ahotini Package, Laurie's, councillor Funn's amendment. And that's carried. We're now doing the increase the grants funding by the CPI. And if we do this, I don't think the next paper is relevant, so... So that's carried. You don't want to do that, I'm sure. We now need to vote on the coupon parking not being fifteen, but actually being eighteen. We've done that. No, we did it separately. Okay. Okay, we'll just get a little bit of advice.
Through you, Madam Chair.
If you voted against this, what would the result be?
Now I've forgotten. I think, no, because if it goes down to fifteen, the pressure will be higher. So if they vote no in a court of paper... Oh, it will be fifteen. Yeah, it will be fifteen. It's fifteen or eighteen. It's 15 or 18.
Okay.
Green, 18. Red, 15.
Anyway, I think, come on, we... And that's carried. And then we've got the city centre weekend metered parking to $3. If you don't vote for this...
Vote against this, it will just stay as it is, I would think. It stays at the current rate.
Okay.
Doesn't, that doesn't give you... We haven't... They're actually both. $3 unfortunately, so do you want to change that somehow so you can actually have a vote on something?
I don't think we can at this stage, I think we're voting either for it or against it.
Officers shouldn't have put all those strings and it's been very, very confusing.
We are nearly there. Okay, we just need to hold it together for a little bit longer. So we need to take some of these things, kind of, they are quite important that we get them right. So the weather type homes, we won't do the BIF and the, we'll do the weather type homes.
No, 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 Sarah, the...
They need to do that last.
Yes, because that's the balancing item.
In that case, let's look at the BIF, which is item T. Keep it. Green if you want to, yep, green if you want to do what Sid said there, and which halves it, yeah, basically. That's right.
So it's going to be 250 regardless? Well, it's for advisory stuff.
250 rather than 500.
Advisory stuff, yeah.
Oh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Oh, it's casting vote, which way would Shaun go?
Well, in that case, I'm going red. That's what I voted.
BIF stays.
Status quo. Right, and so, and I actually think Shaun would have probably supported that, so, yeah. He's not here, so, yep. So now we're looking at the other resilience fund, which is U. And it's red if you want to keep it as it is at 500, and it's green if you want to remove it.
Yep. Private buildings.
So that is lost. It's carried. Your BIF is, your BIF is lost. Never mind, no BIF.
And take it to 26 on top of this.
Okay, so now, I think we should actually do X, which is the, do we? Thank you, some officer advice. So with the leave of the meeting, the mayor would actually like to extend the repayment of the weather type homes to 30 years rather than 25, is that right? 26 years. Which compensates for the amount of money needed to keep the BIF, as we've just voted on. And is everyone happy that we just make that little extension so our budget still balances right? Thank you for being patient. Okay, so we're going back to S with an adjustment, and we're voting on that now. No, I just want to do S, just to deal with S. It's, we're up to S, which is the weather type homes, Nicola. That's a sign of a zealous day. So we've done... So now we're voting, it's carried, and now we're voting on the organisational savings. And can we do V and X together? I think we'd probably all agree we want organisational savings and the extension of the COVID debt funded. Okay, so V and X together? Okay, separately, all right, B. Which is the organisational savings? Surprise, unanimous, thank you staff. X, the extension of the COVID debt funded repayments. Simon? Thanks. And that is carried. Now, what can we amalgamate here? Yeah, okay, so can anyone say, right Diane, what would you like to take separately?
So I would like 15, 23, 24 and 27.
Should we do those now? Do you want to have a look at them?
So 15, 23, 24 and 27.
Yep. So Nicola, what are your requirements? All right, so let's just keep moving then, 14. Which is about the capital costs of the housing programme. That wine's getting dangerously close to being in the fridge. And that's... That was carried, 15. Want to take that separately? Okay. Malcolm, all right, cool. That's carried. 23, I am just going to try and do the one separately, then move the rest. 23, which is about the 2.5 million capex for the town centre upgrades. Well, we're going to do the rest, because I'm only doing the ones that people have asked to take separately, and I do think it will save us a bit of time. I'm thinking about that wine and that fridge. And we still need Simon, there we go. And that's carried. 27. Okay, so you'd like to do 24 as well? Okay, 24. Okay, that's carried, 27. It's been a big day. That's carried. And 27. Oh, okay, sorry about that. Now, is there anything else anyone would like taken separately? Otherwise, I'm going to put the rest. Okay, number 19. 19, 20 and 21 can be done together, okay. We're going to fill it all in. Because we decided to try and save a bit of time. I think it will work. Yeah. All right, wow. And now, the rest, everything else. Yeah. Then Cyrus? All right, the grand finale, people, the grand finale. Would you like to vote on those numbers that are remaining? That's carried. And now, we did have another paper, which was from the Grants Subcommittee, just actually requesting that we consider a CPI for the grants. We've done it, so I think we can agree that that paper is no longer relevant, okay? And can be withdrawn. Yep. And after that, I believe... You, Sarah. Oh, thank you.
It's been a long day, so thank you very much.
And I'd also just like to note that this is my final. Grants and LTP. And Cyrus? But I do know... Okay, so we can stand to say the carickia, and a big thank you to the staff. I always forget to say thank you, but a huge thank you to you all. All right, so, unehia. Unehia.
Kia wātia, kia mama. Tenāka, te tīnana, te wairoa. Et āra takatu, koera ēronu. Aki ki ronga, kia wātia, kia wātia. Aira, kua wātia. Well done, everyone.